Okay, I'm going to call the Issaquah City Council Committee Work Session of November 1, 2017 to order. This is a budget work session. And Bob, I believe you asked to have the floor as soon as we called the meeting to order. I will say Eileen Barber is excused tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. So after the meeting last time, we got some feedback from the council regarding the budget and how we have put it together this year and then trying to make sure that we've got, that we can assist you in doing your evaluation and your fiduciary responsibility as council member. So we have this evening a memo that we've passed out to you and we've got some sample templates. And we'll talk about it at the end of the presentations tonight, if that's okay. And I think, and I know it's a walk-on item, so you didn't have a lot of chance to sit there and evaluate it. But, and what I think what we'd like to do is make sure we can come to some mutual understanding to, you know, if you like what you see up there, we can proceed over the next couple of weeks in doing, not this, when we get it up there, proceed over the next couple of weeks of putting this data together in this format and make sure that you're able to, you know, do your, take care of your responsibility in terms of your evaluation of the budget. If we still aren't quite there, if you've got some feedback for us, that would be helpful as well. But what I want to make sure is, you know, it's going to take a pretty significant effort by the Finance Department to put this together over the next couple of weeks. I think we got the time to do it, but I don't want them to invest that time in doing that and then you come back in two weeks saying, "Well, that's not exactly what we wanted." So if we can have that conversation and then is there some follow-up, you know, towards the end of this week? If you want to get that back to us individually after you had the conversation tonight and the ability to digest this, that would be perfect as well. So with that, we've got various presentations ready for you tonight.
Great, thank you. So I would propose, since we have the walk-on item that we haven't had a chance to read yet, that at some point tonight, we take maybe a 10-minute break and council members can use that to review this as well as our restroom. So when that, when it makes sense, I think if everybody's in agreement, we'll do that. Okay. Let's start with item number one, Department Presentations on Budget Parameters, starting with financial stability.
I'm Jen Olson, Director of Finance. Tonight, the budget parameter surrounded financial stability and there are a few pieces of information that I wanted to walk through with the council with regards to financial sustainability. There are some pieces that after, or given council direction, that we would be able to move forward and make some updates and that's surrounding the financial model because that is a living document and used for decision-making and changes quite rapidly, as well as the indicators. And I'll talk about that here in a moment. So the mayor's budget parameter was financial sustainability, including not relying on the general fund ending balance. Tonight, we're going to talk about under this particular parameter.
Yes.
I have a question on that statement. Is financial sustainability not the means, including not relying on general fund balance? I'm not sure what you mean by that because general fund is the majority of our funding and we have that. So what do you really mean by that?
What I mean by that is that the budget is set by establishing sources of revenue and allocating expenditures. And so the difference between those revenues, over or under expenditures, would then create an impact on fund balance, either positive or negative. And so if it is a negative impact on fund balance, that would mean that we would be relying on the ending fund balance as a source to fund those expenditures. If the revenues are more than the expenditures, then we would not be relying on ending fund balance, which is the budget that has been proposed for 2018.
I mean, I understand the accounting part of that statement, but I'm just not understanding the philosophical part of that statement, which to me is, I mean, that's what we have. It's, the ending fund balance is a reserve, in a sense, you know, for ups and downs and that kind of stuff. It's for, you know, our manipulation, we have a percent that we keep there as to keep our financial stability that we always have. And so if we're not using that, what are we using? Because that is, to me, the big clincher. Now, we can always, you know, dip in a little or say, you know, if we have money, extra money left over, like often at the end of the year, we didn't spend all the money we thought, so the fund balance is higher than we may have projected, so then we have some more money to spend. I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm just not sure philosophically, conceptually, where you're going. Understand accounting-wise what that means.
Okay. After you and then I'll supplement. Go ahead.
So the budget is created with what are called current revenues and current expenditures. And those are the revenues that were, that are identified in the budget. And so what that means is that the current expenditures are covered with the current revenues. So the, so again, largely in part is real accounting-esque when we talk about the impact in fund balance, because funds are created like little checkbooks. And so you have that beginning balance, you have deposits or the revenues, you have the expenditures, which are the payments out, and you have an ending fund balance at the end of every day. So the parameter, the guide for administration in creating that budget, was not to use any of the reserve to cover the expenditures that had been identified or current expenditures that had been identified in this, in the budget.
Okay. So such as last year's 2017 budget, the initial proposal dipped into that general fund balance that was proposed to spend more than was coming in?
Correct.
You're just talking about, so that's taking that out of the picture and just having revenues and expenses equal each other regardless of what the balance is?
Yeah.
Okay. Gotcha. Thank you.
Another resource would be that in the financial management policy on the budget would be one of the principles, and then that would be to utilize current revenues to cover current expenditures. And so that essentially what was part of the parameter here.
Thank you.
A few of the topics that I want to talk about with regards to new or expanded revenues. The first one is a pretty hefty discussion point, so I want to get right into that. And that was debt funding for options for transportation projects. So certainly, this impacts our overall financial stability. What I wanted to do was to direct you to, I'm pulling up papers here. Part of the presentation materials that you received in the packet was some information about the two options for funding transportation projects. This topic had been brought to a couple of the council committees and the last committee that touched on this topic was the Council Services and Safety. And the recommendation from the committee was to identify the differences between or to provide information about a funding source to cover debt that would have to be issued for transportation projects. One of those options would be to establish a transportation benefit district and the other option would be to propose a levy-lid. And in this information, I've provided the, some background on transportation benefit district as well as our bond council's information. There had been a presentation done, so I wanted to provide that information again because that was great bullet points about the, what a TBD is, the formality of it, how it's established, and then the financing sources that you might consider utilizing to fund those projects that are identified in a transportation benefit district. The other option, which was identified to be a potential source of funding for transportation projects, would be a levy-lid lift. And a levy-lid lift is essentially a dollar amount that the council would seek or bring to the voters, seek approval. And what that would do is that would, that would create or increase the regular levy rate. And at, oh, these aren't page numbers, my apologies. On the second-to-last page, in yellow, identified that the overall property tax levy rate, based on the type of levy lid-
You're in a different document thing and you're not-
Page 24.
Of?
This, of tonight's agenda bill.
Okay, 24?
Yeah. And since I spoke, I did want to just throw an asterisk up there. I got the floor. So for the council's benefit, this Providence Point Agenda Bill went to the Services Committee. It was reviewed by Mariah, Eileen, and Tola. And we talked about the Providence Point Signalization Funding for that. And so their recommendation was to look at the TBD and the levy-lid lift, and that's why you're seeing this kind of analysis tonight. Their recommendation was to bring it to this meeting, the council budget workshop, and based on that, it could end up coming back to the council on November 6. So just to give you a little context in terms of why we're talking about levy-lid lifts and TBDs we've been talking about for some time. But it was, and Tola, I don't know if you want to comment on the Services Committee. It's the chair for that and the recommendation, but that's-
That's why we-
-the budget conversation this evening.
I think there was a question on, what we wanted to see was how would this impact, you know, homeowners? I think there was a question about what's, you know, what's an equitable taxing mechanism? What is a progressive tax mechanism and how that would actually work out for the average person in Issaquah? We wanted that information before making a decision.
All right, thank you. What I wanted to-
Can I do another question, Jen?
Yep.
So Bob, when we had the Ad Hoc Financial Committee and we looked at the financial model, we also got a lot of this information on all different revenue sources. I'm wondering, when you look at the list of projects that we have, we have some legacy, I'm going to call it small dollar, but it's still $6 million, legacy projects that are small. And then we have a bucket of projects that are all hugely expensive, have a regional component to them, have possibilities for grant funding. The, could the financial model be run where we didn't use a TBD or a levy-lid or any new form of taxation to tell us what the impact would be and whether or not we could fund some of those projects without a tax increase? And I mean like any kind of tax increase. Is it possible to run the financial model to show that and leave the big projects to the side for now, where I think maybe it would be appropriate to see what a TBD or something else would do? Is that possible? Zirebou?
Yeah. So we could run those models. I think that was in a lot of that financial piece. I think one of the challenges is, and Jen, you probably remember the number off the top of my head, but when we look at overall revenues versus expenses, they're pretty close in balance. So if you wanted to fund a project, like a $6 million project, you'd have to really look at, if you want to do it with cash, you'd have to look at cash balance or you'd have to cut expenses somewhere else. If you looked at debt service for that project, like the $6 million one, was that like two, I can't remember, $250 a year or something like that on average for debt service?
For the Providence Point?
Yeah.
Providence Point is, it would be a $375,000 a year annual debt service payment.
Okay. So if you did the borrowing, we'd have to find $375 for the next 20 years within the budget to just do that project.
Jen, I have a couple of questions for you. Does the budget assume any revenue from any of these sources?
It does not.
Okay. And so then what is the policy question, and maybe this is for Bob, what is the policy question from this presentation that you would want the council to answer?
So in this case, so it relates back to that agenda bill, which was how can we accomplish the Providence Point Signalization Project? So the mayor's recommendation was that we look at doing the TBD. At the Services Committee, we don't have this tonight. We kind of went through the voting results from that as well across, from the last levy. So we did hit 54.7%, which wasn't obviously the 60% needed, but still a majority of the community willing to invest in this. And when you looked at the voting results based in Providence Point, I mean, that had almost like 80-plus percent support in that community. So if we were going to go with a TBD to fund, then our recommendation would be that it may not be the same package of projects that were last time. I think you touched on, Mary Lou, some of those were more regional, like Newport Way in nature. And you could do a TBD, you'd have enough money to do that, but you have to go back to the voters. So one of the questions would be if the council's willing to put a TBD in front of the voters again next year. That would be one of the questions. If the answer is no, then that kind of eliminates that option as a funding source and then we have to look at other alternatives. And I think within that, the finance, the Services Committee said, "Well, I think the other alternative would be this levy-lid lift." Now, there could be, and the Ad Hoc Finance Financial Committee looked at like eight to 10 different sources of revenue and that same packet got presented to Services and they whittled it down to two. So if TBD is out of the question, then I think the council's going to have to look at, if you want to get that done, how are you going to finance it over time? That help? Did I go too far in the explanation?
No, I think I was looking for a little bit more of a precise answer and if you're looking for a thumbs up on whether the council wants to pursue the idea of either one of these, because I don't know where the agenda bill went after Services, I don't recall.
It's supposed to come back to the council based on this conversation. So it could end up getting kicked back to Services and say, "All right, let's look at, let's look more closely at some of these revenue sources and come back with a full report." Or it could just be, "You know what? We don't want to wrap it in with any of the other transportation projects. We just want to do that." And that may be that we come back with a recommended funding source just to deal with this issue.
Okay, so the agenda bill's coming back to council anyway?
Yes.
Okay. Ryan?
So this was one of the questions that I had asked and was hoping that we would get a chance to talk about this. My understanding, and I don't have the agenda bill right in front of me, but so this could be talking about a transportation benefit district. It was focused on Providence Point Signalization, but it could be broader than that and it just seemed like it was a much larger conversation than what we could look at right then and there on safety and services. So I'm glad we're getting an opportunity to have this conversation and to pull out the correct policy questions that we need to be focusing on.
Okay, thanks.
Ready?
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to circle back to the 2018-22 CIP. This is a list of the unfunded projects. It does include some park projects as well as some transportation projects, but I wanted to connect some dots in the budget and to give you, we'll shift around in the budget to make sure that we are getting you the connection and then bringing back any further information that you need with regards to, you know, making that policy decision. So what I wanted to show you, show here is, when I talked about the project for the Providence Point project, and I just indicated what that debt service payment would be. It would be specifically, if this was a standalone project here, it is about $6.2 million of unfunded need. And so I just wanted to point that out. This is in the CIP document. And so what I wanted to also point out, and I'm going to come back to this box down here, this is a debt service concept and this is just a scenario. I'm going to talk about the 2018 budget and where that is located in the debt fund. And then I'm going to talk about this number right here, $3.8 million, which is with all of these projects that are unfunded, the annual debt service over time, if they were to occur in, with the schedule, we'd have to issue debt for these projects. The overall debt service that, payment that we would need is about $3.8 million. I just want to-
For 20 years. All right.
For 20 years, yes. There was in 2018, and I'll touch on that in just a little bit, about the strategy for issuing a bond anticipation note. And I'll show you in the budget where that has been, where that has been essentially accommodated for. But what I wanted to show the council is our current, this is a voted or unlimited GO bonds, so bonds have to be issued for most things that we do. And they certainly have to be issued for transportation projects or those, those big things. So a bond is issued in any case. It's the source of money that's used to pay the principal and interest. And so this is the current excess levy. You can see here, we have an excess levy and this is in the budget and it is on page 78 of the budget. This is the voter-approved debt service and you can see there that on page 78, we have an annual debt service payment of $1.837 million. And you would say, "Well, why, why is our debt service or our excess tax levy up top under the revenues only 1.7?" It's because we have fund balance and we can start to use, in this case, we can start to use that fund balance in order to pay the debt. So we, we want to use fund balance year after year and not have a balance at the end of time if this were to just run its course. And so this is a graphic depiction of what is going to start to happen when our debt service payments, as they were structured in the bonds, start to disappear. This is covered by, the excess levy does not come into the general fund. This is a graphic depiction of our current non-voted or limited-term government obligation bonds. They were issued over the years for a variety of reasons. So this is a summary of the debt and you can see that in 2018, drastically, our payments start to go down and in 2022, we're really, you know, going below the half a million dollar level. And then again, this amortization scheduled, these bonds mature out and there is nothing. This is included in the general fund and on page 144 of the budget, this is a snapshot of the financial model with our current limited-term debt obligations. And so in the financial model, on the line about halfway down, you can see that there's a transfer out from the general fund to the LTGO obligations. And over time, that amount starts to, starts to decrease based on the principal and interest payments that we're obligated to pay in each of those years.
Jen, this is the graph that got me thinking about what I'll call the smaller capital road projects. So for example, if our debt obligation in 2017 was over $2 million, but by 2022, it's down to $500,000, does that mean that if we were to decide in 2018 or '19 to fund those projects, that we would, within our current budget, have to find an additional $350,000 for Providence Point for two to three years until we had the capacity within this to add it, to pay for it as we are now out of the general fund? Or are you saying that we need to actually get down to the $500,000 and stay there?
No, no. What we would want to do then, and this is, would be a financial model scenario, is based on council giving us direction and a policy choice, is then we would then provide you with a new financial model that says new debt for, you know, for the project. And this is how then ultimately, things like the, the fund balance, your, the reserve target, how that would change. And then at the bottom of the financial model is the impact to a taxpayer, because it would be something that we would have to cover through the regular levy.
So for example, we could this year decide we want to do Providence Point and we could find the $350,000 and we would have to do that for two or three more years until it would just become part of this capacity, the unused capacity, we'd use it again.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So what I would do is, if that was the case, you'd see a new graph and you would see the new debt then, and so then you would be able to tell where you were, you know, where you were filling into that gap or that capacity, wherever your comfort level was. The Services and Safety Committee asked for this comparison of options, the TBD or the levy-lid, to identify an impact to the resident. And so what we've done here is put some sample bullet points about the TBD. These come from a sales tax as the funding source. We estimate about $2.2 million being generated out of a 2/10 of 1% increase to our existing sales tax. The sales tax piece requires voter approval. That's a simple majority. It's paid by all who make taxable purchases in the city. And the impact, the dollar amount is based on what, what we have found that an average person spends on sales tax. And so what we did is we took that and we calculated the adding 2/10 of 1% to, to that typical average that someone spends on sales tax and it would be about $51 per year. Now, the levy-lid, lots of choices about the levy-lid. So what I wanted to show here is that the annual revenue would become from a property tax and that amount of the lid would need to be directed by the council based on your policy choice for how much do we need. It does require voter approval and that's a simple majority, again, like the sales tax. This is paid by city property owners. And so I wanted to show here is the impact to a city resident. Depends on the amount of the lid and then we can calculate the impact per year. So at a $375,000 lid, the impact would be $26 per year. If we went to that $3.8 million, and I'm going to just jump right back, the 3.8 million, if you chose to, to set a levy-lid to cover all of this, would be $264 per year. And this is based on an average valued home. So it would certainly have a different impact to a bigger valued home, a less valued home.
What did you use for average valued home?
Average taxable value.
Making sure we weren't sticking with $400,000 or $500,000.
It, yeah, we get a, we get a number every year and we know that that, that changes and so it's based on that, $700,000.
So Jen, then if the council decided that they didn't have the appetite to look towards tax increases to pay for this, there is an option that would be zero impact to taxpayers, either the retail shoppers or the homeowners, but we would have to find the money ourselves for at least three years within our budget. But we could actually do this with zero increase?
Yes. You would, you would issue, you would still issue a limited-term general obligation bond, do the project, and then we would, then we would have additional principal and interest payments to include in the general fund.
Thank you.
Question on the previous slide. What's the significance of the red dash line?
The red dash line was to show the five-year.
Where our current five-year CIP ends?
The, we have a five-year financial model, we have a five-year CIP. Yeah.
Can you go forward a couple? So back, thank you. So if you look at that 2019, the debt service goes down by, so if you just did the timing, if you just want to do that project, you could actually do the, upgrade the engineering again, like we were planning on doing. And you could actually do a 2019 project and you wouldn't have to, you could just fit it in with the existing debt service. You would just have to increase that. About, what is it, half a million dollars, I think? Are you sending the chart up there? So it could be timing of the project as well.
So those were the, those were the examples of impact. I'm going to go back. Were there, I, any other questions about this? I didn't want to move on to another topic.
Not so much a question, but it seems like we're talking about two things if the, with the Providence intersection, it's a separate agenda bill. And are you, and I haven't seen that, I haven't looked at it, is there a, but at the same time, this is incorporating everything that's in this, unfunded in the CIP, of which that's just part of.
part of.
It is. And the reason for showing it this way is, one, the Providence Point is the 375, to show that specifically, because there is a separate agenda bill for that project. But we also wanted to have a conversation about all of the unfunded projects, because it is a five-year plan, and that the effort to establish a transportation benefit district or to set a levy lid that goes to the voters, would it be beneficial for us to have a different dollar amount to cover other projects if there were other projects that you wanted to pursue sooner rather than in the five-year CIP?
And I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, because I don't have it in front of me, but the agenda bill is focused on Providence Point signalization, but it does give that broader language that opens up this broader conversation we're talking about here, which again, was sort of the point of, like, let's talk about it, because it seemed like it could be a much bigger conversation.
And just to clarify, a levy lid exactly, similar to a bond that would go to the voters, it would be project-specific, and it would have a dollar amount to it that people would vote for. So it would look, to all intents and purposes, to the general public, it would look the same as the last bond, except it's a simple majority required versus a 60%, right? But it still say X, Y, and Z project for X dollars and this, whatever. So it'd be very specific, and that's all it could be spent on. Thank you.
Were there any other questions that you had of us, or other pieces of information that you might need in order to take us to the next step?
Did the committee, considering the Providence Point project, did the committee have a conversation of using all or some portion of our excess reserves in the general fund just to pay for that project? If I just look at the forecast in the current budget, just in the general fund alone, our ending fund balance, which such as it is, is forecast to be $7 million above our policy maximum of 20%. Was there any conversation of just using cash on hand to do a project like?
There was not in the services.
I think, so, give a little context in terms of our presentation. So we had all those options laid out. And then the conversation was, which we've talked about before, there is no dedicated funding for transportation projects. It's one of the things we tried to do, we had to define projects, but, and so, the conversation was, do you want to just talk about this project, Providence Point, and look at that, or do you want to look at, let's find a way, since the majority of the community voted in favor of taxing themselves for transportation, to fund a significant number of other projects that could get done through a TBD? And so that was part of the conversation. And if you just looked at doing with the project individually, then you could look at, you know, the questions that Mary Lou were asking, or you're asking. If you just want to look at spending $7 million, it's a slightly different perspective than just saying, we still have a problem, which we've got to find a way to fund transportation projects in the community. And part of that conversation was, like, 80% of the voters up in Providence Point supported this. So if you take that project and you complete it, there isn't much incentive by the people who live up there to vote for, there's not as much as incentive to vote for projects, because there's not direct benefit to those voters, right? If you complete the project individually. So that was part of the question, is just looking at the voting results and understanding what that means. If you're going to go to the community, I think you're going to want the support of the people who live up there to invest in a larger project, of which they benefit as a whole, but also they have direct benefit as a result of where they are. But I think, you know, we did talk a little bit, there are options that if you just wanted to deal with this project on the agenda bill, there are a couple ways that you could do it. You could finance it on the cash flow side, and you could roll it into the future debt service. You could pay for it cash. It's just that, I think, what we were trying to communicate is, there are broader issues to think about, rather than just the project itself. Because the other piece related to this is, council should have a conversation about, is, do you want to spend that excess capacity financing on a transportation project? Or do you want to put some of it towards recreation? So there's a broader perspective of how you're going to use those dollars and how you're going to invest those. But we still have the fundamental problem of, we don't have a good way to pay for, with our existing general fund revenues, pay for transportation in the budget.
Okay, all right, and thank you for that. It just seemed like, whether it was all, the entire amount for that project, or just cash on hand provided some amount, it would change the calculus, because that is a significant amount, you know, that we have to work with, just with our cash on hand. And then the other thing, too, is, I really think that the, many people are, don't yet know what impact is coming to them in terms of property taxes. That's already been voted in, and they're going to start seeing that. And I don't know if we talked about, you know, trying to, you know, the timing of, especially if some of these, you know, emerging, and people starting to see these in their properties, the school and Sound Transit 3 and all of that, starting to really see and feel that. Just getting something going, using our own cash on hand, gives some of that to play, time to play out. And so that was part of my thinking as well. We could get something going, but not go to the voters as soon, if we still felt that that was the right thing to do. Make sense?
Yeah, absolutely. I think that, so, I think what I tried to, when Stacy asked the question, if the council still says, you know what, we understand, the council may come back and say, we just want to deal with this project, and we're going to tell us how to fund it, the best way to fund it, and we'll come back, do you with the report on that. If you still want to have a conversation of, okay, we understand it, but we want to roll it into a broader perspective, then we ought to work with the council to talk about when, how, you know, maybe another year out, I don't know, timing. So there's a whole variety of conversation that would happen. The council could just choose to fund the, you know, the engineering design for next year, and then we'd still have that timeframe to get our financing in place if it was a TBD choice. But I think, no one is saying, if you approve this tonight, we need to go on about in February. I don't think anyone is saying that. I think what we're saying is, if we want to deal with it, then we need to have a conversation about it. And that's the direction, I think that would be helpful. You just want to deal with the project in and of itself? That's an easy solution, too. We can come back with a report, this part of this budget cycle, with a recommendation, too.
Do you want to answer now?
Whenever, yeah, whenever you'd like to, however you'd like to do it. So, but I think tonight would be helpful if we.
Can we say how it feels tonight?
No, I think we have, we usually have a process for budget deliberations.
Right.
Okay. So save it for deliberations.
Yeah, that's what I would do. Paul Minton?
Yes. Questions?
So I'm not sure if this fits in here, if I should save it, but I'll just go ahead. So I think when we were looking at the agenda bill, that the recommendation from the administration was for a transportation benefit district. So we talked a little bit about other alternatives here, so I think we would want to get more information on that, and then have more options on that agenda bill about ways that we could go. Because I still was feeling a little bit like, this is sort of, you know, it's a really big decision to make, and it wouldn't be coming back to services, it would be coming to council. So to get more information and have more options in that, and I mean, I would even be okay if it came back to services, but that would be my suggestion.
Just one last thing. So there is, I know just coming up, too, we've got a million, and I think Jen's probably going to talk about how we funded the million in the budget for the pinch point in South Cove. But we have met with DOT, they've came back and gave us some options on how they're planning on doing that. They did confirm that they're going to be running sound walls all the way over to South Cove at this point, and that they're willing to do the pinch point as part of that project. Now, we'd be responsible for the financing of that piece. So our, in our conversation, we said, we would have an interest in just rolling, rolling the pinch point improvements that need to get done into that broader project, and we should save some money, because it'll be part of a larger project that WashDOD is doing. So, but, we don't know what the cost is yet, but it could easily, I think we have an estimate in the capital budget. But, you know, we got to think about where the money's going to come from, from that piece, too. So I, I think when we come back, we may, I think what Jen is saying here, too, we got a gap of about 3.8 million just to do the current CIP, we may want to have a conversation of how the Providence Point project fits in with those as well.
So that's fairly significant news. I hope everybody caught that. And hopefully, people who are watching on television, their ears perked up, because that's very, very significant, positive news. Is there a timing for the project, estimated timing, even though we don't know what the cost is?
So they were still looking at 2018, 19. There may be some delay by year, because in essence, one of the things they're looking at is, rather than doing peak hour lanes, they're actually looking at doing a auxiliary lane, and then kind of changing the scope in terms of where the auxiliary lane would run. The good news is, that would be a 24/7 lane, rather than just used at peak times. So, you know, we communicated, we're supportive of that concept. They still need to talk to, you know, the legislators that represent the 5th and the 41st, but, so I think it's still aimed for 2018, 19. I think they still have some conversation that they got to do, based on what the potential new costs would be affiliated with that.
So slight sidebar here, it would be nice if we could put some sort of a news item out that was in line with what you were saying, so that folks who don't spend their Wednesday night watching these exciting meetings can get that information out. That would be great. Paul?
Good question. Last I had heard, our State Department DOT was, still had yet to talk to FHWA. Are you saying that FHWA has now been engaged, and they're supporting it? Because that was the key next step.
No, they would still talk to FHWA. I don't know, what they did was, based on the analysis, they did a spring analysis, and they recently did another analysis. And I'll forward the analysis onto the council. But I think what they discovered was, the peak use lanes would actually improve the amount of congestion on the freeway portion here in Issaquah, and it enabled you to get to the massive congestion down by East Gate and Bellevue faster. And then you actually increased your wait time down in the East Gate area. And so by doing auxiliary lanes, what they found was, there actually was some improvement throughout the system, because essentially, the 405-90 interchange is like the big clog in the drain. And that just pushes everything, it just kind of pushes everything back. So that's why they've kind of arrived at the auxiliary lane option.
Okay, so what's new is that option, I don't want to go into it anymore, but they still haven't gotten to FHWA. So to me, that'll be the big news. That'll be the significant, that's my, that was my understanding.
Yeah, I think what we've been told is, they're planning on designing that, as long as the FHWA doesn't, you know, but that's part of the normal process. Yep.
Fairly big news, yeah. Maya?
That's really great news, and I'm really happy to hear that. And so, but we still have no idea. We had rolled forward $1 million to try to, to try to work on the sidewalk, the pinch point, but we don't know, really don't have any more information about whether that would be, how that number would play out, or if that's the right number.
Yeah, like, I think what we're trying to say, even when we had that 2:00 AM in the morning, yeah, that we don't know yet what the final numbers will be. I also need to, Emily's way over there, so she hasn't tapped me yet, but they, the WashDOD still has to go through a process, because it's a significant change in scope. So the legislature still has to, I believe, has to make some adjustments in the change of scope and that type of thing. But there, the administration of WashDOD is recommending that they go through this route, based on the traffic analysis and stuff. So it's not like a done deal, but I think that's where, we've expressed support for that.
Yeah. Certainly, public information. If we're talking about it here, let's get it out there, so people know where we are in the process. It's important.
Nominally, when do we, as a council, when in this process are we going to deliberate on how large of transportation ask we want to make, and whether it's a benefit district or a levy lid?
So I think, that's a good question. So it could be in deliberations. I think the biggest question that the committee was faced with was, do you want to deal with this project alone, or do you want to look at it within the context of, how do we fund transportation in the city?
Yeah, I think of it as a four-square, right? On one side, you've got single project, comprehensive, and on the other, you've got benefit district or levy. Right?
So if you decide to deal with it on its own, that will, will give you recommendations, because it's a slightly, I mean, the analysis is pretty straightforward. If you want to have a conversation that we should fit, roll this into a broader conversation about how we fund transportation, then, once that decision is made, then the branch off of that tree would be, do you do lid lift, TBD, or, you know, 10 other options, I think, that we laid out for the committee at that time.
Well, I think, I think there were two that would actually, I mean, there were only two that were serious contenders, if we were looking to do a comprehensive transportation package. Again, I come back to, when, I'm confused as to when we're expecting this council to consider.
So when we do budget deliberations, we will talk about, we will deliberate that, and the policy question being, do we want to, are we interested in exploring that further? Funding sources. Separately, there is the Providence Point Agenda Bill, which is easy to kind of get them all mashed together, and they are related. So that agenda bill is going to be coming back regardless. But when we do budget deliberations, we'll specifically talk about whether the council is interested in pursuing either of these options, or I suppose anything else that's...
And the agenda bill doesn't have a recommendation, and it kind of, the recommendation was to send it here. And so, you know, the council, maybe the committee wants to, based on this feedback, kind of finalize that recommendation, I don't know. Or it gets kicked into the deliberations piece, but there is that kind of left there hanging.
Sure, I guess I don't, based on this conversation, I don't get a sense from this body on TBD versus levy lid yet, unless I kept paying attention.
No, you're correct. So.
Okay, good. I would want to come back to committee, right, at this moment, because I would have no idea what the, what the other six council members feel about this issue.
So I think we've got budget deliberations scheduled here, two, when is it again? Couple sessions from now?
Start that on November 15.
So at that one, you may get some feedback that could inform the agenda bill.
That I would look forward to.
Okay.
Jen, go down a couple slides of the, keep going, right here. So that tells me that through a TBD, so I'm thinking of the number 3.8 million, that's what your, what your forecast says, if we want to do all the unfunded portion, right? Right, 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 right. But go back, go back to the slide I just had, yeah. It's that through a TBD, we could fund up to 2.2 million of that annually.
Annually, yes.
But a TBD has a limited life, and has to be renewed, right?
That is correct. The same as a levy lid has a limited life.
Okay, okay, okay. So it's possible, I mean, one option we could debate is actually a blend, where part of it is a TBD and part of it is through property.
The other thing, too, it's 2 million annually, so over 10 years, you would generate approximately $20 million towards.
Debt payment.
Debt payments.
Yes, I understand. I get that. Then that's the way I'm thinking, the way you've presented it, I think, is clear to me, what you've done with that unfunded projects table that's on here, that's in the CIP. It's, what would be the debt payment per year if we funded all of this? And so I'm just thinking of different ways to come up with 3.8 million dollars.
Yeah, it certainly could be a combination of a TBD and any excess to do it all in one year. This, this shows, if we looked at just this concept here, at the time when we were talking about capital projects, that we would need 1.6 in 2018, about 9.8 million in 19, and so on and so forth. and so forth. So, overall, $60.5 million of unfunded is about 3.8 million. So, that's where we did the analysis to say worst, if this was the, if this was the plan that was set in stone and we issued debt for all, that we would have about $3.8 million to find a funding source for.
And, not to go down another rabbit hole, but this isn't unfunded, but unfunded project list, that doesn't mean it's the list that the council would end up with in terms of what to fund. It just happens to be our unfunded list right now.
This happens to be the unfunded portion of the five-year list of projects. So, some of these projects have another funding source and in this table, it identifies the unfunded piece. And, so, for example, the Providence Point has some other sources that have been already paid for because the design work is done. And in 2018, the remainder of the design work was to come from alternative to source and so that was the remainder.
Certainly. Okay. And what I, that was so interesting about the presentation, especially in terms of the TBD, was that it's pointing out that also Parks is, Parks Capital is also currently, does not have a dedicated funding source and it's another area where we are having a hard time. So, I think this chart was very helpful. Thanks.
Just a quick clarification. So, we would go through budget deliberations and then the Providence, the Agenda Bill that we're talking about would come later after we're done with that. Okay, great. And thank you for all the additional information. It was really helpful.
I did want to just point out, because we were talking about the pinch point, that project, so, in, and I'm going to start here at the 2018, the million dollars that was identified in 2018, I just want to show that for 2018, we have $1.6 million of unfunded. And so, that, the concept for that and what's in the budget on page 79 in the LTGO debt fund, the idea was to issue a ban or a bond anticipation note. At the top of there, you'll see debt services, so that would be bond proceeds of 1.656. To issue a note, and then, in the expenditure side, there would be, so, we'd receive those dollars in and we'd transfer those to the Street Capital Projects Fund for the streets to do their work and then the portion of the remainder of that for the, and I think I have, and I've found another error, so, that it would, we'd do those projects and then we would cover that bond in anticipation note. We'd cover just an interest-only payment. And so, the idea there was that we would at least start some work, we would address that project, which is identified as Project TR028 in the Northwest Semamish Road and that we could start some work there. So, that was accommodated for in the 2018 budget for your consideration.
Thank you. Mitigation fees?
Mitigation fees.
So, we're on the second item of our agenda and we're already an hour in, just to let everybody know where we are. So, interesting. We have so many questions.
In 2018, mitigation fees, a review of the fees is proposed. The 2018 budget identifies that there would be approximately $16.7 million in age-related fees estimated at the end of the year. What I would like to direct the council to for some supplemental information, the mitigation fees is in the special revenue funds in a summary form. And that is on page 65 of the budget. So, the revenues would take in those impact fees and then, from this fund, based on the projects that were identified to use mitigation dollars would be transfers to those capital project funds. In the supplemental section, page 177 of the budget document, what I refer to as age-related fees are those that had been identified that have to be used within a certain timeframe. And the top portion of the age summary report shows that for 2000, essentially, we're not in jeopardy of losing any funds in 2018. You can see, though, I want to point out that we've got about three years where we start to see that year six actuals and there are some in year seven and year eight as well, but we start to see where we've got some dollars earmarked for fire mitigation that we would be in jeopardy of losing. So, I just wanted to point those out, but for 2018, we're not in any jeopardy of losing. There's also in the AJ report about $1.7 million in non-restricted funds that are earmarked for special purposes. And in the supplemental schedule is a list of where those mitigation dollars came from or what they were earmarked for.
Jen, one of the conversations we had at Atlantic Shore this year was about where mitigation funds have come from. It was my understanding that, that the chart that, several people played a role in putting together a chart and it was difficult to put together the information because there's not, we don't have, we haven't had a good system for collecting that information and having it, I don't know how to say it, transferred that information all the way over to the finance department and have it kept in one place so that we would know. The question really was at the time was how much have we collected for Central Issaquah Plan and where has that money been spent? So, it's my understanding that we will soon have, maybe one of our new software systems, maybe Munis, will enable us to collect all that information. So, we don't just have mitigation funds that say we've collected this much for parks or fire, but we know where it came from. And so, there would be, one of the pieces of how that helps inform us, just in, by one example, is how we want to spend that money.
That's right. We're looking forward to having some of those applications where we can match the revenue that comes in, that's project-specific, to the expenditure on the project that we do utilizing those funds. So, that's exactly right.
No, sure. Jen, on the table on page 177, there is a line for Human Services Campus at $968,000 and I was wondering if that was the money that was collected from Talis or affordable housing because not all the units required by the development agreement were built. And if so, why is it, why is it called Human Services Campus?
I'm going to ask Bob to help me out with that before my time.
So, that was the 965?
Yeah.
So, yeah, so Talis, at the time, bought out their, they did build some affordable housing and they bought out the remainder, which was that million dollar payment. And the council at that time designated that to be for Human Services Campus. And so, there was a study that got funded out of there. So, I think there's about 965 approximately left. And that took about four years to kind of work through the process until finally they abandoned the effort. And so, then, it reverted to affordable housing and it's just, it's sitting, essentially sitting in that fund until, and it hasn't gone to Arch, but that is a good conversation the council should have at some point because we've been keeping it here for a local project, but it could be used for, it could be just sent to the Arch Trust Fund or it could still be used as an incentive for, you know, a local project.
Awesome. Thanks.
Can I add some more information to that? Because the, they built 51 units, so in lieu of building the remaining 49, they actually funded multiple things. They actually funded the trail along Newport Way and there was a half a million for affordable housing and a million for the Human Services Campus. So, somewhere that half a million for affordable housing has to be in here as well. There was three, there was three items that broke into that, in lieu of payment that Talis made.
So, that whole thing happened before I arrived? I don't have much information on that, but I do know on the million, the original million dollar earmark, that, that's where that got...
And I'm not disputing any of that, but there was another half a million set aside for, for affordable housing. It was separate from the million dollars for the Human Services Campus, established from that. But, also, there were some other funds that actually built the trail on the north side. So...
So, if you're asking where that half million went, we'd have to do some research. I just don't know off the top of my head.
I just said and asked then that maybe for clarity on the mitigation table, it could be shown as Human Services Campus or affordable housing? That would be great.
And I think that, yeah, council took action, actually lifted, so it probably should get...
Oh, we lifted it.
Yeah, so it's really, it's just for affordable housing. Yep. There is that Opportunity Center that we identified as part of the TOD project that council may choose because it's been part of the negotiations with the developer on that to help pay for that cost. That would be like a city-owned facility that would be rented out to a human services provider. So, there is some nexus to what council originally had wanted to do with those funds. But, I think there's, I don't know if you want to comment more on that, but there's some plan down the road at some point to have that future conversation.
Jen, on the, on the aged mitigation funds, the one for police, for the year one forecasted ending fund balance is negative. And just going with the question on growth and keeping up with police services during growth, did that fund have money in it and now you're showing it as an expenditure on the, in the new proposed budget without adding the new three positions? Or how, how much money did we collect for police and are we now spending it on those three new vacant, those three new positions?
Mitigation dollars aren't part of the sources for funding in the general fund. The dollar amounts in the 2018 expenditure column are for the capital items that were proposed and knowing that there was going to be a mitigation fee review and the timing of some of those capital expenditures, we would, we would bring back exactly what that funding balance is because we're still waiting, we know that we're going to be doing some updated forecasts for ending fund balances and bringing that back. So, this would be updated, too, with those, better reflection of what we're going to have for balances to show in the final budget.
So, if it's a negative now, does that mean we're not collecting enough for equipment potentially in our mitigation fees?
Potentially.
And is the assumption that as your tax base increased, those operating costs for police salaries and benefits is covered by the increase in your, in your base and so the mitigation fee is just for the physical items?
That's right.
So, just to touch base then, so things such as the expansion of the dispatch center, additional console and so forth, that would be coming out of this fund?
For that capital, the equipment, yes, yes.
As well as the work we had to redo on the firing range and that stuff, did that come out of that fund as well?
I believe there's two items of capital equipment for those purposes, so that, those two would be, I don't have the actual detail of what that capital project is, but there were two proposed spending authorizations for those.
Great.
REIT. Okay, REIT is a new special revenue fund for 2018. The purpose for this fund is so that we could collect for better transparency, better tracking of this source. So, it was established through the fund accounting changes to collect all of these resources in one fund. It is now Fund 105. The, I just wanted to give the council a little bit of background about what we typically see for transactions and that is we see an average of 120 real estate transactions every month. The average sales are about $75 million in changing hands of property. So, just to give you a little data there, the 2018-22 CIP includes REIT as a partial source for various projects. It also is a single source for projects based on the eligibility of that project, whether it, you know, could all be used for that. And so, there, that is reflected in the fund on page 64 of the Budget Book, Section 5-6. We anticipate that at the end of 2007, we have almost, we've got about, we're anticipating $4.5 million, but, you know, I just received the REIT report and so it's looking like we're likely going to have about $5 million to start the year off for 2018. The Budget Book reflects about 4.5 and we anticipate that in 2018, that we would have REIT sources be used for street operating and so that, those are REIT sources actually for ongoing or maintenance costs. We would have some REIT be used for municipal capital facility fund and so that is some, some of the projects in the CIP, certainly for street capital projects, about $4.8 million. The centralized ITS fund. However, there is the likelihood that we would not necessarily need REIT for that project because that, those dollars were old bond dollars and we have to use those up. So, if we don't need to use the REIT source, then we certainly wouldn't want to do that because we have to use the bond source. And then, we have some park capital projects that are identified for a total of $6.9 million of REIT sources for capital projects. Now, the budget shows that we anticipate about $3 million. We are certainly conservative when, for revenues, so we want to under-promise, over-deliver and that we would continue to have a fund balance reserve in that fund for then, future planning of the council for capital investment. So, that is the very brief presentation about REIT, but it is, it is a source. It has been a fairly stable source. It certainly is subject to the economic ups and downs, but when I looked at the last three years, this is the average real estate transaction and average value. So, it has, there's where we have some consistency.
So, that's actually, one of the questions that I had was it seems that in this fund, we're spending it down significantly. So, does that mean, when we look at the body of work, if I was to step back and look at the budget, are we heavily relying on this year just to get our normal work done and so we don't have a drawdown projected for a general fund, but REIT is being heavily used? Are we, are we getting bonus projects or are we just doing our regular work that we would have done anyway?
We're doing the projects, and I'm going to jump back to this, to this, this table here. If we, if we had chosen not to use REIT as a funding source for some of the projects, we would likely have a higher unfunded list of projects and a higher dollar amount that would need to be funded and so that would, you know, that would be more for, more for discussion. So, that is, that would be the trade-off, that if we, if we didn't use REIT in this scenario, in this budget, at this level, then it would impact then the need for finding an additional funding source or just having a larger list of unfunded projects.
That makes sense. So, I guess from a policy point of view, that was hard for me to discern myself. That was why I put, sent one of those questions in. And so, we haven't figured out a long-term strategy for funding parks and roads, so we went back to using one that we know is not going to be our long-term one, but it gets us through another year. Okay, perfect. Questions?
Yeah. So, a couple of things, when we talked earlier about how much detail we need on budgets and line items. So, here, when we look at CIP, these projects, and I don't know... So here, when we look at CIP, these projects, and I don't know how much we're looking at again, but the funding source for each of these is a very critical piece that we'd be looking at. Because basically, and this is another ask for information, I guess. When we look at these and we're saying, you know, oh yeah, that's $3 million. And, and you do the magic to figure out, you know, which sources are best, but we don't know that. So that's the information I'd like to know. So when we're spending down REIT money on something or whatever, because we've got, you know, four and a half million dollars of capital coming from here, that by, you know, that kind of detail is, I think, important. What is it? Okay.
It's, it's in the project detail. And the project detail in the capital budget, it has that. But I hear what you're asking for is in, in this to show what projects are utilizing REIT specifically, rather than, you know, we know that some transportation projects are using REIT, but you would like to see what projects are using REIT.
Right. And any of these sources that work that way. Because like I say, you're matching up funds and trying to, you know, I know you're trying to balance all this stuff that you have the details to that we don't. And that's fine, just when you make those decisions, those decisions, I think we need to know, because they're, they're critical to the budget balance as a whole. But definitely want to see, you know, I mean, that's your work, trying to figure those. Best places to recommend that. So the next question follows up here is when in the, again, on page 64, in the REIT funding on the revenue side, you know, the '17 budget was $3 million. The '18 budget revenue is projected at $3 million the same. But the '17 actual was, is 4.3. I know you, you say you're being conservative, but when you have an actual last year of 4.3, and you again say the projection for this year is 3, which was last year, that to me is pretty ultra-conservative, because I don't see '18 REIT being probably all that much different from '17 with the markets doing what they're doing. So that, that's, that's a bit of conservatism that I think costs us money, because then we're sitting here with $1.3 million trying to figure out where to get it. And we've got it, more than likely. So those are the pieces that I, you were jumping up, so.
Well, I was going to let Jen answer first, but the thing with REIT is, you want to be conservative, because you just don't know how it's going to. So those, you know, in the past, what I would suggest is, if it ends up over that, it just ends up in the cash balance. And then the council essentially delays by one year your ability, but you know exactly how much you've got to spend. The other option is to see where you are after six months. And, you know, in 2018, and then you can make an amendment to the budget if you wanted to do that. But you could come in and change that to four. The risk is, you base your budget on four. And that's not necessarily where we've been historically. And then you run the risk of having to cut the budget or delay a project next year, because you just, the money may not end up coming in.
And, and I understand what you're saying. And, and I appreciate some of the, that approach. But what I'm seeing overall in a number of things here in this budget is that there's a lot of conservative pieces. So if this is one at $1 million, we've got another one at $1 million, another one. Pretty soon, by the end of the day, we've got a lot of extra money that we could have planned to do things that we look like we can't. And so, you know, there's, there's a balance of, of that. And there's other places in this budget, I'll bring that up later as well. But I think that's, that's a big concern to me, because I think we leave a lot of money sitting there when, when we have some actual data from last year and a projection to one year forward. I don't think '17 was a, you know, abnormal year in, in what's happening in '18. And you have to use your, you know, your judgment on that. But that's, that's a lot of money to leave on the table, and it's in a number of places, so I think it adds up.
I don't know that we're leaving money on the table. So is there some, was there something? So $1.3 million in REIT represents a lot of property transaction, a huge amount of property transactions, because the REIT just represents a very small percentage of the value of those property transactions. So was there something unusual? Is there anything that we can look at, point to why that was 4.3 rather than 3? Also unusual, because it was a moratorium year. And then I guess the question I would have is whether we are, so to make sure that we are planning using some standard best practices, which I'm sure we are. So that's the question I would have, not so much whether I think we should be using 3 or 4.3 million.
There was in 2017, an unusual property sale. And I would need help with the actual name that hit the papers.
Yeah, so I was looking for Keith, because I think it's 90 East, isn't it? It was the main office building over.
Yeah. It was a one-time $750,000 REIT bump. So that is not necessarily something that may occur in 2018.
That's the information that we.
Right. So I do, I thank you for your comment, because it's not really leaving it on the table. What you ought to, what the council ought to do every year in the budget process is discuss how to use the ending fund balance. Because when you're conservative like this, and this is in the REIT fund, you ought to have a conversation, because it should roll into the REIT fund. You'll have a balance at the end of the year. How do you want to use that for the upcoming year? Because if you come back to our parameters that we had at the beginning, we were told, don't put the budget together, that ends up spending any, any fund balance. So the council certainly can have that opportunity for that conversation. If you, because it's going for capital. So the nice thing is you don't build any future operating costs other than potential maintenance, depending on the project, by doing that project.
Right. But, but I guess the point of this is, is somewhere here, we're going to get in the conversation of you're asking the taxpayers to pay more money for something. And taxing themselves in, for these capital projects for, for traffic and roads and so forth. And so that kind of money that can be spent on that project, I want to know all the money that's available that we have. Because if we're going to tax somebody, I want to know that we're spending the money we have and not just asking for additional money because we're being a service in some areas. Now, that's good information that you gave me, that the one big, you know, real estate property tax, that's something, no, okay, so that makes some sense there, right? Again, didn't know that, but that's, again, the question I have. Still, still, there's, you know, 1.3 versus three-quarters. So there's still a half million dollars or so in there to look at, so.
Bob, I have a question for you.
Uh huh.
So I think I understand what Bill is saying, but he'll tell me if I got this wrong. When we go through this and you look at it, a lot of times you can see the conservative effort that's been put into predicting where we may be at the end of next year. But when we come back during, when you come back during the year to council with the budget adjustments, one conversation we never have is that if we're above, you know, if we're exceeding expectations by the second quarter, we never do talk about those projects, like Bill is saying. And it may be that we're ahead in REIT and behind somewhere else, and your recommendation would be, please don't spend any money, it would be too risky. But we don't seem to have that conversation. So how does, how does that happen? And I think if Bill knew that there was a mid-year conversation that said, you know, we had a $750,000 bump in REIT we didn't expect, and an opportunity to do something with that, that would make you feel more comfortable, because we are, we're taking that revenue. We took our conservative assumption, but then when the revenue exceeded it, we actually did a cap, something capital with it, so that something got done and completed. Is that what you're asking for?
A little twist on it, but that, there's an addition to it. I mean, that's, that's, some of what I'm saying is captured in there.
Okay.
But, but, you know, we'll talk about it.
Before we ask for new taxes, you want to make sure we're spending everything?
We have, right. I don't want to go out and borrow money to buy a car if I have the money to buy the car.
Okay.
Jen, in the budget on page 64, the REIT fund, one way that differs from the CIP is in the, is that it is broken down into REIT 1 and REIT 2. So I assume this is both of them blended together.
It is.
And then in the, in the CIP, it, we, it, there is a 6.437 plans on REIT in 2018. So I, and now I'm, I'm seeing here, in the operational budget, it's about 6.937. So did you explain that difference already?
The difference?
Could you do it again if I?
No, that is a good question. The difference is, in the first line, it's street, the street operating fund. And there's, there's $500,000 for, that goes into the street operating fund. The remainder lines are capital projects. So those numbers then would be for municipal capital, street capital, centralized IT, park capital. So those, that's, would be the difference.
Okay, so that's portion of, that's a portion of this fund REIT that's not, okay. That's the non-capital portion that's going into operating.
Correct, yes. The 500 is the, is the non-capital.
I get it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Fees.
All right, tech fees. Technology fees are included in the budget, both, well, actually, there, there are some changes. So I'll walk through the new internal services fund for information technology. And that is on the budget page 112 and 113. Some of the changes in the 2018 budgets included the shifting of the tech fee, the current tech fee that's charged in development services at a 5% of permit rate. The budget is, in 2017, $164,000 generated to cover the costs associated with delivering those services. That has been shifted into the new IT fund. The 2018 budget also includes a proposed new fee for, another new tech fee for park and recreation, online customer service, self-service portal, essentially the park and rec application for programming and for facility rental. And so what we wanted to do is, in the budget on 113, it identifies a lump sum of charges for goods and services. And so that is the piece, page 113 of the budget. And so that is where the revenues are proposed. What we wanted to do was to provide the council with some information about the proposed tech fee for the new park and rec software application that is scheduled to be implemented. But also have a further, an expanded conversation about tech fees in general for providing online or customer self-service portals in a transaction, per transaction amount, or a percentage of the total. And so the chart below is intended to provide the council with some examples of the types of transactions that are coming online or, for the future. And so I wanted to walk through a bit of how this table reads. The second line down is the park and recreation program. And we've identified out the total number of transactions. So we went back to say, how many transactions do we have to deal with? For parks and recreation applications or for transactions? And you can see that for programs, about 21,000, and facility rentals, about 1.1, 1,100 transactions. So if we take in, if we equate the value to the number of transactions, it's about $1.8 million in program, programmatic fees and about $900,000 in facility rentals. If we were to move forward with a dollar-based transaction fee, we would generate 21,000 or 22,000, the two combined together, in a tech fee at the dollar per transaction level. If we were to implement a 5% fee, similar to the DSD fee that we charge for tech fees, the two amounts that we have calculated or estimated to be the $90,346,000 for each of those two types of transactions. But we wanted to give you further information about future things that are coming online, such as utility billing, customer service, customer self-service portal. We certainly have the business and occupation tax, the potential for a business portal for filing tax returns for our business customers. And then we have a number of miscellaneous types of transactions that we bill for and accept payment. And so those would be an example of the, a dollar-based fee or some other per-transaction amount, or a percentage amount. And we picked 5% because we, we currently have a DSD at 5%. The budget for 2018 identifies an example of a 3% transa, or tech fee on the park and recreation. And so we wanted to provide this for council to give guidance on policy on establishing a new source of revenue for technology.
So Jen, the DSD, the development services fee of 5%, is that permit center?
It is.
Okay. And the purpose of that is to collect in advance revenues we need to maintain our technology or purchase new technology in the future?
It's both. So a big portion of that 3.5% goes for the my-building permit.
Yeah.
And that's kind of charged by all the eastside cities, whoever's part of the my-building permit.
Yeah.
They've gone to more of a fixed, originally, when it got set up, it was 3.5. And then the 1.5 difference went to technology in the department. So it has to be building-related.
Yeah.
Now they've gone to a fixed rate, but the cost is approximately the same as what we were spending before. So it's about 3.5% in terms of the total amount of money. So that, so that was it. So the other balance of that has been used for, I think John is here, you may recall like some, what some of those expenditures were. But there are a variety of investments that were made in technology in that department.
Yeah, so just, I want to stay up at the policy piece for now. So we made a policy decision when we approved the DSD fee that we were into the my-permit, whatever that program is called, and that we also wanted to collect an additional 1.5%. So now we're seeing what it would be, look like if it was a dollar or 5% through all different departments. So again, what we're being asked is if we want to apply, apply that to other transactions that we do. But in the budget, right now, what's built into the budget is 3% for parks and rec and zero for the others that are up on the list? Or is there something built in, into the current numbers in here for 5% for everybody, or 3%?
So the permit center is the same. So that was still 5%. That's.
$170,000 predicted.
Yeah. The, we built in a fee for parks and rec. And we had a lot of conversation around that, because first, the dollar-based fee versus the percentage-based fee, because most rec program, because everyone in theory has used, you know, one transaction, saying relatively the same amount of use. But when you come in and rent the Pickering Barn or Tibbetts, because the cost of that is so high, if you did a percentage-based fee, you'd be, though, it would, the burden of the technology fee would fall upon those users more so than someone who comes in and registers for a basketball program, even though the usage would probably be the same. And you can see the variance there, because on the facilities and rentals, if we did a percentage-based fee, it'd be 46,000 versus a transactional. And you can see the total amount, 90 versus 46, whereas the total transactions for programs are 21,000. So it seemed like we landed at 3%, but it seemed like that was worth more conversation before we did an agenda bill for rec program fees, is do you want to do a fixed dollar amount? Because that would be fair all the way across the board? Or do you want to do with, have some percentage basis on those fees? And they're slightly different than kind of the building permit fees in terms of how that's done.
So a couple of questions and maybe a couple asks in here. I think what would be helpful to me is to understand, have another column that actually tells us what you've used in the numbers that are in here. So what the staff has recommended and built into the budget for each of these categories. But I do believe during deliberations, there's some policy questions here about expanding this program. And I would have to say, when I read the presentation materials today and I read the budget, I didn't really understand that this policy question was here, is if we're going to do this everywhere. And I kind of want to see some information, I'll call it the turf replacement table type thing. I want to know if we're connecting enough or too much. So somewhere, somebody has to tell me that we need to collect $5 million by this year, because we expect we're going to have to replace this software, this software. This, picking between a dollar and 5% will be really hard, because I don't know what the right number is. And so turf field replacements, a million dollars. How much are we going to collect to pick, to replace them in the years they need to be replaced? I need that same sort of information around whether or not you want this, these new fees approved.
Not a question. Back to the, the permit. It seemed to, I seem to recall, and this is just my memory, I may be wrong, part of our policy decision to set it at that rate is that there were some one-time expenses of scanning legacy documents into the system. And so this expense, again, that was a policy decision we made, is to increase it above than the cost just to my permit, so that we had additional capital to complete that kind of special project over the course of a couple of years, I think. Am I remembering that correctly? That was a policy question.
Yeah, so there was. Yeah, so there was, some of that was ongoing, bringing some of that paper document into a digital form. But there were other, other investments and improvements that were made with the same thing. So it wasn't just limited to the scanning piece of it. There was just technology in general in the department, including the scanning of those documents.
Yeah, I guess, like you say, that, I'm not sure how this is fitting into the budget deliberations, in a sense, because this is a policy question of going into the future, what we want to do, right?
No.
No?
The policy question is, do we want to establish a new technology fee for the reasons that they explained? That would be the question.
So it would extend to those fees that were, I mean, to those departments or transactions that were not currently. So there's a few things we've been mandated, for example, the BNO tax. We've been mandated by the state to use either file local or the state program. Those have costs affiliated with them. So it still fits within that kind of overall council guidance that we've given on things, on cost recovery. So, you know, and that's what a user fee is. So it's, the users are paying for the benefit of that system because not everyone in the community ends up using the rec department, for example.
Okay, so financial model and indicator review. And then I was wondering if we can get through special projects and then take our break, perhaps? Okay.
Sure. What I wanted to do on the five-year financial model, because I wanted to just somewhat briefly touch on that, but then perhaps go back to that when we're having a conversation a little bit later about deliberations and the information that it will be coming to the council for additional information, but also because the financial model can change based on a scenario to help the council establish a policy decision or help you make that. So what I just wanted to touch base on is that the current financial, the current financial policy in the budget, in the supplemental section, identifies the, the current debt that we have now, but that could change. It could change with any of the council deliberations. And so what I wanted to keep bringing back is that, and I would kind of touch on Council Member Ramos's question about, how do we know how we're doing at different points in time, is to, one, in the financial management policy, it's identified at a quarterly that, and this is new as, as we're starting to, we're making improvements in providing information, is that the council would receive this quarterly information. This financial model is going to be part of that quarterly information to say, this is where we're at with that. It's not a budgetary document, but it's a budgetary, how are we doing and, you know, where is our, our financial performance at? Similar to some of the other kind of one-page financial health pieces of, of reporting that we can provide to show the council how we're doing financially in a grand snapshot based on public ratios. And so we're looking to continue to improve that, too. That was a piece in our retreat and in the forecasting book, that, you know, we're starting to create these tools for the council. So the financial model, yes, would be something that we would be bringing back on a regular basis to help with that and point out what's changed in that, that year-to-date forecast. So this is used as a resource for you to strategize and also to point out and to, and to provide us the administrative direction about the fact that it is a living document and is a tool and it is a five-year strategic, or strategizing tool, but we can go farther. Because oftentimes, five years sometimes isn't enough in the case of debt, if you're looking to fund debt just through the general fund without finding another alternative revenue source, because you have projects that you've identified, because that would be a longer-term bond, so you'd want to see how that impacts you longer term. So the hope is that perhaps we can bring it back in a 10-year or even 15 or 20-year, which is, which is a real stretch from a planning effort, but at least it gives you that long-term view of what decisions you make today impact tomorrow. So that's what I wanted to point out there and then ask any questions of the council. It's on page 144 of the budget. It's very small. This is a document that I like to bring in big pages. And in, in any reporting out, we would certainly do that in electronic form, so you can expand it on your tablets, but also, you know, it's the big sheets and it's the, the roll-up-your-sleeve-and-make-decision sheet. So it has a lot of good information, but it's very hard to read in the budget. 144 in the supplemental section. Then further, I just wanted to, to touch on financial indicators as well. And this is another document that can be used for forecasting and serving as a test as to how we're doing and how decisions impact us better or worse. And so on page 46, or I should back up to the actual kind of matrix of the environmental factors, how they impact your decision-making, and then the financial factors, that's on page 145. Page 146 through page 150 are examples of indicators. It's not all of them. But what they do is they give us a look back retrospectively on how we have performed in the general fund, revenues per capita, expenditures per capita, how property values and operating deficits, how, how they change, and looking at it graphically, but also looking at data. And then the important piece of these indicators to help with decision-making are the description and why, or, you know, why if this information changed, if we trend up or we trend down, what that might mean to help inform decision-making. And so this is an example of our work towards performance measures, performance management, and starts to move us in that direction. And that, so we're, we're very excited about having the system in place that, so that we can do this a lot easier than the current effort that it takes. But we did want to provide for that in the budget because these, this information does reflect, in the 2018 columns, it does reflect the proposed budget in terms of a comparison to historical, as well as part of the, the five-year or future-year trends.
Are we okay getting through special projects before we do a break? Who's up?
Hi, Emily Moon, Deputy City Administrator, and David Fujimoto, the Office of Sustainability Director, and I are co-presenting on strategic plan. And as I told David, my only job for introducing this part is to just be the rah-rah. We're very excited about the opportunity to pursue a strategic planning effort. So we're going to walk you through just the basics on what we would hope to achieve with that. A lot of work still to come on scoping it, and some of that work will be done as we identify a consultant partner. So with that, David?
Great, thank you. I'll try to do the rah-rah part as well, but I guess I get to talk about the wonky part. So in the budget, there's, the budget proposal includes two parts. There's $90,000 for consulting-related work for the strategic plan, plus an LTE, limited term employee, for, providing for some backfill. So essentially, Office of Sustainability would be helping to provide some project management in this case, working with a broader team, but helping to deliver that overall body of work. It's for about a part-time position for about nine months, so about .375 LTE throughout the span of the year. On the slide here is an overview of kind of some of the attributes of a strategic planning framework, if you will. It's really intended to provide that cross-cutting overarching look. It's something that we know that City Council has talked about with the administration, at least for, course of at least a year, I think. And it's something that we're-
A lot longer.
Longer, sorry. A lot longer, for an extended period of time.
Get that, like, let, let that one here go.
Thank you for that clarification. And it's really an overall framework which helps us to organize and provide focus to our full range and collection, our portfolio, if you will, of services and investments. It can help us plan, prioritize, think about the future, identify some of our key goals and specific objectives. Jen talked about outcomes and thinking about how do we orient our budget around outcomes. This strategic plan would help me answer that more fully, that question of what are those priorities or what are those outcomes that we're trying to achieve as a community as a whole? So not kind of looking them in a siloed kind of approach. So attributes, forward-looking, holistic, aligned. It's based upon our values as we think about governance, things like transparency, accountability, analysis, would clearly and obviously need to be informed by our community. It also needs to be actionable. So we have to think about a shorter time span, probably the range of about five years going forward, and then again oriented towards results and outcomes. So what would we try to achieve? Essentially, what we're looking at is producing a framework. There would be an actual document that would be produced, but essentially what we're, we're talking about putting in place is a strategic implementation framework. We have heard from council that we want this to inform our next biennial budgeting process. So timing is going to be really critical to this effort as well. And, you know, thinking about, as we move forward with this project and think about inputs to the administration's preparation of budget, that's probably around June or July, that we need to have some sort of an output. But also recognizing that I think that body of work would need to carry forward through the end of the year to complete kind of all pieces of that plan. Related to that is that because we want to be reflective of the community and community engagement and what that looks like will be really important. As Emily mentioned, this is really still early stage. We need to confirm a lot of the details about what the expectations are for what community engagement looks like. That will by far, more than anything else, drive timeline for this project. We know that we want to do some aspects about informing and asking and then checking back and confirming, but the extent to which there's boots on the ground or kind of uncovering different aspects of populations, that, the depth of that will really drive our overall timeline. And then we also know that the output in terms of a, a good communication tool is critically important. So as we kind of culminate this body of work and think about, how do we communicate where the, the future direction of the city and what that means to our citizens, that, that product is also really important as well. Broadly, some of the outcomes are really alignment, consistency, and clarity. I think you can probably bring those true on a number of different accounts. As Jen was talking about in terms of budgeting, we're talking about moving to an approach where we're budgeting by outcomes. Similar things with capital planning, our overall plans, whether it's our mobility master plan or our plans with parks, they'll be working on a healthy community strategy. So there'll be opportunities for aligning those efforts. And really a key part of this is as we go forward with developing the strategic plan, we also need to look at the underlying kind of operational aspects to really make sure that we have a plan that doesn't sit on the shelf. So if we don't pay attention to those other pieces that are critical for implementation, then we won't ultimately have a chance of success. And so I kind of ran through a few of those, but-
Sure. So I'm just going to touch on structure. This is what we know about how we would pursue it at this point in time. We are going to have a project team, first and foremost, made up of city staff from the Executive Office, OS, and our senior leadership team. We'll also utilize a consultant that has done this work before and can help guide our process. And then we anticipate involving other city staff members at a variety of points in time, but most substantively, we have a group of trained facilitators on our staff, and this will give them an opportunity to go and utilize those skills by helping with the engagement pieces with community. And project oversight will be the mayor and city administrator. So we envision having check-in points, make sure that we're, we're following the process the way that they had envisioned, and helping to shape how we go through that data and report our findings. And then project phases, we're anticipating that there's an initial phase that's just conversation. That's what we're calling discovery. So that would be an opportunity for us to have individual conversations with all of you, with some department directors, maybe some key stakeholders in the community, to ask some questions about how to scope the project, what their hopes and dreams are for outcomes from the project, and also to collect some examples from other communities. You know, we've done some of that, but that would be included in discovery as well. Other phases that I'll just touch on, analysis, we're still anticipating, as we've described to you before, there's an aspect of a SWOT analysis that we believe is necessary in that phase, or the gap analysis that we've talked about with you, where, where is it that we have strategies and we have clear themes and objectives and where do we not? And then I'll say, we've put engagement as sort of a distinct phase on here, but it's probably a piece of all of the phases. So I just wanted to tell you that thought. We will be going to community at various times and for different purposes. Sometimes it will be just to listen, sometimes it will be to generate ideas, sometimes it will be to confirm or validate ideas or themes, and then make adjustments as well and test those adjustments. We also anticipate that the engagement will be both external, so facing out to the community, but also internal, to make sure that we're getting our subject matter experts that are in our departments and getting all, all of their wisdom during this process. So that's strategic plan. Happy to answer any questions.
Sure. So I think this is great. I like, I'm glad it's in the budget and I like the way you explained it. I just have one comment, and it's probably, you know, for future thought. It seems to me that our community itself, our residents, our businesses, currently are a little conflicted on what our vision might be. I don't hear a lot of consensus in the community. Just want to make sure the process is extremely externally community-focused at the beginning, because when I think of what a strategic plan looks like for a city, we're only one piece of building a community. And so there might be a very broad community vision consensus that needs to be developed first, and then the strategic plan is the government's piece of how we're going to work on it. So really want to make sure we have ample time upfront and ample engagement to sort of talk through some of the conflicts. And a couple of examples would be, are we growing too fast? Are we growing in the right place? Should cars be passing through town or driving around town? The community itself seems conflicted on those. And so before I think we can dive into our strategic planning piece of it, we kind of have to have those conflicts resolved and then work on our strategic plan. So I think it's all one process. I just want to make sure there's enough time upfront for that first piece to be hammered down.
Okay. Retreat?
Yep. So this is the second slide I've had to show you that has an asterix on it. And if you recall from the first one, that means it's a bit of an oops, we, we tried to make an adjustment and took it a little too far. So this item was inadvertently left out of the budget. It was intended to be there. And so we included it in the administration's recommendations for adjustments, which we'll see later. So there has been an attempt periodically in this community to hold a council and senior leadership team retreat to talk about big topics, and we think that is a very important effort that we'd like to continue. This year, we're proposing a higher allocation for the retreat, and that's for a few different reasons. There had been a suggestion that we include funding for an off-site and even maybe a multiple day, so a two-day retreat. This- This figure would allow us to do that. So that's a question to council, is that what you wish to do? We are also anticipating that there are a multitude of topics that we could entertain at the strategic planning or at the council retreat. And we'll need to have some feedback from you on what you prefer to do. But I think first we have to decide how much time we have together. But I've listed some examples here. We anticipate that if we held the retreat, say in the springtime, as we've often done to get ready for next budget development season, that is likely to be a good point in time to have a touch on the strategic planning effort. So that could be a topic. We've had conversation about perhaps diving into council and other protocols a little bit more and getting some clarity on how you'd like to make those revisions. Another one that I put up there is best practices for effective political administrative work. This is a topic that had some discussion with a few of you on. There's a body of academic work around this about how to work together in what's called the gap between kind of politics and administration. And I think we could have some very good conversations about how to collaborate effectively working in that gap. And then the last one is just if there were particular topics about service delivery or quality of service or long-term planning efforts that you would like to discuss, that would be a good time to do it. We don't often get solid chunk of hours to dedicate to, you know, one topic. And so this would be an opportunity to do something like that.
They're not, because it's... Oh, there we go. So anything with an asterisk, does that mean when we're in deliberations, we have to sum that up and find that as cuts as well somewhere else? Okay, thanks.
Yes. Well, we'll try to help with that. We'll try to identify some possible sources.
So then kind of back just to understanding someone, like strategic plan is 90,000-plus of an employee, that's money that's already in this budget?
Correct.
This is just one of those elaborations we're asking for that says it's in there, we can't see it, but you're highlighting it here?
Correct.
All right. We're not sure exactly where it fits, but okay.
No, I think it's the other way. So asterisk means it didn't get into the budget?
That's correct. So strategic plan, as Councilmember Ramos talked about, there's no asterisks on that slide. And so therefore, it has been included in the budget, and we gave you page number references for where those pieces are located in the budget.
Gotcha. Yes, two different things. But when things are presented here, they're somehow in there, we just can't see them.
No, it's not in there.
So the detail.
So retreat is not in, and the strategic plan is. And we've given you page numbers so that you have some sense of where to find it, that allocation.
So if we, so when we deliberate, we decide we want to deliberate on the strategic plan, we would be voting to take it out or reduce it or something because it's in the budget. So when, if we do, when we do deliberations, we're probably going to have to talk about council retreat because it's actually not in the document.
Correct.
But the administration's recommending it just for technical reasons it didn't get into the document. So they would like to include it, and they're, so we would need to do a thumbs up to get it included. That's what the asterisks mean.
Right.
Okay. Everybody for space planning? Okay.
All right. Space planning is intended to give us an allocation to hire a consultant that will help us to really sort through the multitude of challenges and options we have on near and long-term horizon in terms of our space for staff and our programs. So some examples of issues that we are having right now is City Hall and the police department are co-located. When the original project was passed for the police department, it was intended to be the police department's building. They are running into challenges fitting new staff and equipment in the middle floor of the building. And so we need to figure out how to accommodate their needs and then how that might push other staff out of that building and where that staff might go. Engineering is another example at City Hall Northwest that has grown and is needing some additional space. We have several of those examples in our buildings where departments are running out of room to house employees such that they can be productive in their jobs. Also, there's opportunities as we look at reshuffling again. How can we co-locate some functions maybe to improve collaboration between departments? So that would be something we would want the consultant to help provide some opinion on. We talked about this during capital planning, that we have some significant pending repairs or perhaps improvements that need to be made to our existing facilities. And so we'd love to come back to you and give you some recommendations on where you get the biggest bang for your buck, what we should reinvest in and what we should perhaps look at in a different way. We also get rent right now from some of our facilities. City Hall Northwest is the one that I have in mind here, where if we decide we're no longer going to utilize that space and collect rent, utilize it by a different party and collect rent from them because we need that space for city employees, then there's a loss of revenue implication there. Other things, we're running out of meeting space. We're finding that it becomes more of a challenge for us to find space to hold either public meetings or staff meetings. And then we just have some inefficient uses of space where we have document storage, for example. And there are better ways to do that, and we would hope to provide some of those recommendations through this space planning study. I think that's all I'll say.
$75,000 seems like a lot of money. I remember when we did, when we looked at whether we were going to annex Kohani or not, I think that was on the order of a $200,000 study, which there was a, there was a lot to it.
Okay.
$170,000. That's a full-time consultant for a year, right?
Yeah, yes, it is. So we have, we have gotten some verbal quotes from consultants. That's not to say that this is the exact number, but we've tried to ballpark it. Our facilities manager, in fact, had a more robust quote effort a few years ago, and that resulted in a project with a very similar scope that was to be spread over two years, and it had a $350,000 cost. Now, some of that and some of this hopefully would also go toward making those kind of tenant improvements, the modifications that might be needed after those recommendations come. If they're, you know, just portion out the space that we currently have in a different way.
Thank you.
Sure. Other questions?
It says pending repairs slash improvements. So is there maybe something buried in there? There's some anticipation or hope for improvements that are significant?
I just meant simply we have capital investments that we know will need to be made, say mechanical systems that are going to need to be replaced and not just repaired, but replaced. And there might be, as I said, some need for us to make some space modifications as, let's say we choose not to rent out space at City Hall Northwest. There might be improvements that would be needed for our staff to be able to use that space or conversion to conference rooms or...
But at this point, is there, is there any anticipation of moving any walls out?
No, because we have so many different pieces to examine, and so we haven't, we haven't set that plan. I think we need, we need help figuring it out. It's quite complex when you move one group somewhere else because we're short on space everywhere. There's a lot of ripple impacts. We did provide a figure, and I don't recall it off the top of my head, of upcoming five years' worth of capital improvements, reinvestment, major repairs that would be needed at our major facilities. And so I think that's, that's primary in our mind, is how much do we want to reinvest into some existing buildings?
Other questions? Okay, let's take a 10-minute break. Let's be back, well, let's be back at 8:40. Yep. One.[1240.66]
Let's be back, well, let's be back at 8:40. Yep. One.
Okay, we are back in session. Next item on the agenda is impact of state mandates and legislative changes. Two items under this topic, sales tax mitigation and paid sick leave. Who's talking about this?
Okay. I am just going to introduce the fact that we have some state mandates that we want to talk with you about, but I'm going to hand it off to Lori about the paid sick leave. I'll be back.
We have a new paid sick leave law, state law. It's actually Initiative 1433, and it was passed in 2016, 2016, but it won't go into effect until the first of the year, 2018. We actually didn't get the rulemaking on it until two weeks ago. So we've sort of been hanging out, waiting to find out what was going to happen with it. The law is actually going to apply, it allows one hour for every 40 hours of work. It will apply to all non-exempt positions. For us, the major impact's going to be for the part-time, non-regular who are currently not accruing sick leave. And that benefit impact is, you'll see that throughout the budget document under the salaries and benefits. Besides the budgetary impacts, we are going to see, the law is actually going to cause a lot of policy changes. It will, it actually expands the definitions of parent-child. It's going to limit our ability to verify absences. It's going to impact our sick leave cap, so we're not sure how that, how they're going to be impacted at this point. And it's going to disallow incentive programs, so it will discourage any type of programs that discourage sick leave. So we will be coming back to you in another setting and talking to you more about how those changes. Most of those changes are likely going to impact bargaining, and we will need to negotiate them. Okay, any questions? Yeah.
So from a city employee value perspective, we're in favor of the paid sick leave. It just said it has impacts on us?
What's that?
So in, in terms of how we as a city value our employee pool and, and how we treat them, we think this is the right step, but you are just identifying for us those impacts that it will have.
Yes, that's correct. Okay. Yeah. Thanks.
And, and I'm assuming that most of these things, other than things that affect bargaining or so forth, but the rest of them will not really affect any of our regular full-time employees because they have more than these minimums allowed.
They already have.
So it's really going to be an additional for our seasonal employees and limited-time employees and that, that, those that don't get it now.
Right.
So they will get some, some sick leave, and then it may apply a little bit to some bargaining. But again, those folks in the bargaining stuff are going, they have much better benefits than any of these things are going to come at this level.
So what the law does is it sets a floor, you know, it sets that one hour for every 40 hours. It allows for us to have a greater policy, so we can have more sick leave, which we do. The way it's going to impact us, though, is that that sick leave cap, if, if that cap's in place, you can't gain your one hour, and so we're going to have to figure out what to do with that cap and how to make it flexible.
Say the cap again.
The cap. So we have a cap on our sick leave on how many hours you can have in your bank. The law says that you have to earn one hour for every 40 hours, so if you reach that cap, then we freeze you, and we can't do that. So under the new law, we're not going to be able to do that.
And so in regard to the part-time, non-regular employees, do you have any sort of estimate on, on what that would mean entirely?
Our, our estimate, I can, I think Jen can probably speak to that. We went through, we did an hours and how much that would be in terms of sick leave, and based on an average salary for a part-time, non-regular person, we were looking at about $20,000. So it's not a significant budgetary impact.
And, and the modification of sick leave cash-out provisions, it, it is not clear yet?
We're not sure. We're not sure yet. We have to go through and do some analysis on that. And like I said, we'll be coming back to you and talking to you in another setting about our recommendations and what we don't want, you know, our recommendations regarding policy changes.
Great. Thanks.
Just, just a first off, so folks say they work for six months. You said cap. Is it set up currently that at the end of that time sits on the books, it gets cashed out? You know what, what happens there, or you're saying you don't know that yet?
We'll have to come up with a policy for that, I guess. What the law says is any sick leave that's not used at the end of six months, let's say, will, will essentially stay in your bank. Should you come back within a year, then that would be provided back to you. There's also, just so you know, there's a 90-day waiting period, so for, for new part-time employees, there's a 90-day waiting before you actually use your leave. Yeah, accrues from your date of hire.
Thank you.
Sales tax mitigation is another state mandate identified more widely known as the Marketplace Fairness Act or Internet Sales Tax. This takes effects, effect on January 1st, 2018, but doesn't start to, to impact us until we move into '19 and '20 where the funds that we receive in mitigation dollars for sales tax sunsets. The estimates from the state legislation, and they provided some estimates as they went through and adopted this law, and there are still more to come, again, from how the overall or the true impacts are, obviously. The, it's expected that we would balance out the sales tax mitigation dollars that we receive with new sales taxes that are generated on those remote sales. Overall, starting in 2020, we anticipate a gap of about $260,000 in lost revenues. And again, the Department of Revenue is still studying this issue and will continue to provide us with estimates. What I wanted to point out in the budget document is that in 2018, we're going to receive the same amount of sales tax mitigation, which is over $700,000. So there's not an impact financially in '18. In the financial model, on page 144 of the budget document, in those future years, we did not include that even as a revenue source. So we know that we would be starting to receive sales tax revenue, but we were, we wanted to remain objective, conservative, combine the two, not optimistic, but we did not want to include that as a source of revenue long-term. So there's more to come on this particular state mandate as well, but we did want to let the council know that no impact in '18, but future years that this is coming.
That was great. That was, I'm glad that you not, not only explained why we're not seeing it in this year, but that it's a financial impact we have to worry about. So thank you, that was awesome.
Staffing and benefits overview, starting with new proposed positions. Okay, tonight, we're going to talk about new proposed positions. We've covered some of those already, so we're only going to chat about the ones that we haven't covered previously. We're also going to overview classification and compensation study, where we're at with that multi-year project, and give you some of our cost assumptions for the 2018 benefits plans. This was the mayor's budget parameter concerning staffing. He asked us to limit new staff positions or modifications to current positions to anything that would address the budget outcomes, and, but we used outcomes previously, now we're using the word parameter. So you will hear tonight, as department directors present on their recommended new FTE, they should also explain to you which budget parameter that staff position ties back to. So tonight, we're going to cover the positions that are in green. Previously, we covered the request for three new police officers, the one, police communications supervisor for dispatch, and the part-time administrative assistant and emergency preparedness coordinator positions. So with that, Jen, are you first here, really? Oh. Did you want me to say something on this? You want to say it? Go for it.
This table is a summary of all of the staffing positions, and we wanted to talk about the, each of the individuals at a dollar amount, and we'll, we'll talk later about how this would be reflected in some budget highlights for connecting the dots from the budget document to a deliberations list or, you know, a document that you can use as a resource for policy decision-making. So this is, this is a, just a brief synopsis of what those positions are and the fund that they are proposed in. So in the general fund, the finance department, we're requesting a new accountant. This is proposed to be one new full-time position. Just wanted to point out that this would be a delayed start for this position of mid-year. Some of the reasons why we are asking for this position to be added to the finance team is that we want to continue our efforts in improving our internal controls for our financial statement preparation. That means our audit field work and the reconciliation process that has to go on throughout the, throughout the entire year, getting prepared for audit. We've had some audit findings in the area of internal controls. We are likely to continue those audit findings for 2017 and '18, but we're, we're finishing up the audit for 2016, so more to come on that. This new position, we anticipate that will assist the, the organization in improving our compliance on grant reporting. And so those are federal and state regulations, and those are very important sources for our capital projects, as well as some operating grants, for sure. This position, we also anticipate that will help us to improve the timing of our bank reconciliations, the report requests that come from internally through the organization, from the city council, from the community, to improve our, our level of accuracy and detail in our data entry, and helping other departments in ensuring that their accuracy and level of detail goes into the system, and also to add more technical expertise to the finance team. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions about this position request.
So Jen, on the audit findings continued through 2017 and 2018, is that what the last two bullets are addressing? Were those the findings that the auditor said we needed to put more resources at, or what does that statement mean?
The audit finding is pertaining to the internal controls, and so that's that sub-bullet under the internal controls for financial statements. Certainly, the internal controls for, for the report or bank reconciliation will help with, with that because we'll find, we anticipate that we'll find issues sooner and that we can correct those and ensure that we have accuracy in our internal reporting, and then, of course, our outward-facing reports to the public.
The improved compliance on federal and state grant regulations and reporting, is that where the, those granters are asking us to verify that the grant dollars were used for the appropriate purposes?
That's, that would be part of it. Yes.
So could you talk a little bit about the delayed start? The reason behind that, if we already have the findings and that's to focus on audit work, why the delayed start?
The delayed start was in an effort because there are, there's a lot of positions that are being requested here, and so in order to help with the expenditures, the proposed expenditures, so it was identified that, that we could continue to use temporary accounting staff and, and continue on with our current structure. Well, I should back that up. The finance department restructure is also part of the improvements in all of these. And as I talked about, that revenue management lane, an important piece, but, but certainly it was for helping with ensuring that we were not seeking out ending fund balance as a way of funding new positions.
Just one more. And, and so you've got that at $68,000 and so, but that is an FTE, so what would, what would be the, the annual salary for this position moving forward?
The annual salary and benefits?
Just double that, because it's 68 right now. So, yeah, I think as Jen said, the original proposal is start that position January 1. And as we balanced, trying to make sure the overall budget was in balance, one of those ways for this upcoming year was to do a start delay for this position. You'd probably start, we'd have some temp staff, and we'd probably start recruiting in, you know, end of March, beginning of April, and it takes approximately two months to recruit, select, and then for them to give notice to their current employer. So that's why we ended up with July 1.
Good evening, John Trager, IT manager. So this is for the new senior ERP systems architect, and so this person, IT, special revenue.
What's an ERP? What's that stand for?
This is a slide, anyway. So this is an enterprise systems analyst, and they're expect, they'll be a system expert on the Munis ERP system. Also be doing enterprise reports, design and deployment, because we haven't got a lot of enterprise reports right now, as you guys have been looking for. The, our enterprise resource planning system. So that's typically Munis. It's a, it is a financial planning system that you use to manage all of your, and, and you can use it for a lot more than that, but it's the central system for run most organizations. And that's, so this is a typical title for this type of role that we're looking for. So, so he'll be doing the reports design, and then they'll also build and deploy and maintain data interfaces, because we don't have a lot of really good integration between all of our systems as well, so that's another key area for this person. And he'll be the top-level system administrator on our Munis ERP that we're using now. As right now, we're kind of covering it with a series of folks, but we really need to have one person who owns the top level. So the key deliverables from this person would be report solutions, design implementation that result in actual reports for multiple departments. And then assist the executive and finance departments with publication reports for the public consumption via the web, because we don't really do a lot of that right now, and the public needs it and wants it, and I know you do too. And data integration to other applications such as our HAL, which is the system that is, runs public works, work orders and asset management there. Asset Works, which is our fleets management system. Trackit, which is the permit tracking system, and PerfectMind, which is the soon-to-be implemented system for the parks and rec. And then we also, as I mentioned before, separation of the system admin role from staff with financial job responsibilities. A key tenet is that the top-level admin for a financial system is usually an IT person who is, doesn't actually have a financial role for separation of duty. Is that the last line? Yep. Any questions?
That last one, explain it to me, admin-staff role for finance responsibilities.
So the idea is that if you're a top-level system administrator, you can do anything in the system anywhere, because the system handles in the system anywhere, because the system handles money. If you're a finance person, you may know enough about the funds to do something that's probably not appropriate from an auditing standpoint. They don't want, don't want to have those avenues open. So you have to have, somebody has to own the system top to bottom, because there's no other way to manage problems. But it's best, the rules generally, auditors look better on somebody who's not in the finance department, who has that very top-level control of setting up accounts, managing access, configuring the system for upgrades, doing all these technical management roles of the system. But they're not the one who actually processes payroll or manages, you know, accounts payable or some other types of roles like that, right? So it's a kind of a standard concept called separation of duties to prevent that. And so the auditors are always looking for that type of setup.
And aren't we doing that now?
We are, but it's, yeah, it's not really ideal the way we're doing it, because I don't know the system well enough. So like, I am the top-level person, but I'm not a Munis expert. I don't have time to focus on that to exclusion, which this person would as part of their job.
So one of the challenges with ERP software is figuring out, when all is said and done, what it's going to cost, right? And it has tendrils that reach out into every corner of an operation. But I'm pretty sure that when we were talking about the parks, customer relationship management software, we talked about the implementation costs. And I think it was something like $50,000 bucks. And I said, and that's the entirety of the cost. And it reminded me, which of these tools is the, is that one?
That's the Perfect Mind.
Right. So, and this is where my frustration with ERP software has come from, because it's like, okay, it's $50,000, except now it's a chunk of this new person's time, and this person's $150,000 a year, and that's a cost that we're going to carry forever, right? And so that's, I worry with these ERP softwares, right? As we, as we go to do these further and further, the larger and more integrated, as opposed to federated separate systems where you write interfaces between them. When you have one.
Well, that's, that's this role, it's just federation, actually. So this is data integration. It's not, this person doesn't own Perfect Mind, it's not their role. Their role is just to make sure the data gets to Munis, and data goes back, if necessary, the other direction. So that's something we don't have, any real federation between our applications at this point, so that's one key role for this person.
Okay. It just, whenever we talk about ERP, I feel like we always, we underestimate where the costs are going to be, and then down the road, we get dribs and drabs of additional costs, and this is one of those dribs and drabs. An important role, I understand, but it's just, it's very hard. Whenever these decisions come up, I feel like we're always lowballing what it's going to cost us to put these systems in. And I realize we had to do something, right? Our system was the finest in 1990s technology, I get that. We gotta, we gotta, we gotta go forward, but man, oh man, I'm in the wrong business. I should be in ERP. And I, and I used to do ERP implementations, so don't get me wrong.
Any questions? Okay. Next.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm going to present on the next one. Unfortunately, could not be here tonight. So I'm covering the neighborhood engagement coordinator. This is a request to increase the position from .75 to 1.0 FTE. This was a position that was originally created under a council goal, and now we're proposing to fill it full-time because we feel like it has made a significant difference, and we have a whole lot more work to do. And the current workload requires a full-time position, and we see that continuing into the future. So council received a full recap of the program on September 18. Some highlights that we gave to you at that time included our move toward more proactive development outreach and variety of tools and materials that have been created for that. A lot of special event coordination and attendance for the purpose of creating connection and gathering input. Neighborhood meetings, next door, we have more active presence on next door than we used to. The creation of online maps for people to track projects and programs. Her participation in the art grant program, and as it's expanding at the neighborhood level. And then neighborhood summits that we wish to continue into the future. So there's some new work, and then there's work that we've already established and want to continue next year.
Oh, I'm glad we have this position. I think she's doing good work. I get confused on things that go back and forth in a statement. Someone is in their three-quarters of a position, we want to change it to a full-time. But it, it goes back and forth in the statement of things, like just on this page here, back on the FTE page, it says, you know, .25 neighborhood engagement coordinator on page 42 of 55. Then the next page, new FTE, it says executive neighborhood engagement coordinator, one FTE, $108,000. So that's for a quarter of an FTE, $108,000.
No. So it does two things. So one is, the increment is, that's what we're asking for, that's new into the budget. The second piece is, it's an LTE, it's a limited-term employee. So at the end of, is for, the authorization was for 18 months. So if you don't renew it in the budget for next year, it'll go away, we'll have to lay that person off. So the full cost then is truly, that's full salary number, which is essentially saying, okay, we've made a decision to make that a permanent position and put it into the budget.
So we're converting from LTE to FTE.
Yes. And that, there's a little typo on there that should have said .75 LTE versus .75 FTE.
Right. And there's a couple places that goes back and forth, and that's why I kept getting confused on that, because I thought we're just increasing that by a quarter. So there's a little additional cost, because the FTE has more cost to benefits and that kind of stuff as well.
Yes. Yeah. The other piece that's not on there, but the reality is, there's, we've invested a lot in that individual. She's demonstrated tremendous return, I think, on that investment. And so there's a retention component, too, because you're going to hit a point at some point where unknown if that position is going to get renewed or not. So, you know, it just would make sense that that person would start to look at alternatives if we don't have that commitment to know that we're going to fill that long-term.
Yeah. So I guess just clean it up a little bit, particularly when it goes to executive neighborhood, you know, title change and so forth. So we consistently get that.
Yeah, I think that's just reflecting what department it's budgeted in.
Thank you.
Hey, look, there's a cool graphic. This came from a neighborhood summit, sorry. We have an awesome, big, big banner of this as well.
And another cool graphic. There you go. Yeah. Brett Heath, Public Works. So I'm here to talk about dirt, and specifically stormwater. So we're looking at a position, .1, .1, .61 FTEs in stormwater. And this is a result of MPDES permit, national pollution permits, and Washington State Department of Ecology's Western Washington permits permitting system, and the increase in the requirements that they've added to us. So in a nutshell, what they've done is said, what you used to do in five years, you now have to do in two. And so this is what, we've crunched the numbers for that and figured out that we need about .61 FTE to handle that increased workload. So this is a level-of-service issue. I'm just maintaining existing level of services with this increased mandate from state of Washington. Any questions?
Would this be a whole new person coming on at .61?
So our, our plan for 2018 is, we're going to fill this with overtime and evaluate how we're doing with the program, and then we can make adjustments as necessary from there.
Okay. So, well, it says new partial FTE, so to me, that means that you'd be looking at a part-time person coming, coming on, but you're, but you're not, you're going to fill it with overtime and then.
Right. Yeah. Yes. Because we have a couple, we have a number of part-time positions already that we're using in stormwater as well. So we'll be looking at, this will give us an opportunity to evaluate that position, and then we may combine that with some other positions in the future. But we're looking at, this is, this is going to be an ongoing .61 FTEs worth of work into the future. This isn't just a one-time, one-time expense. But for 2018, that's how we're, we're not actually going to add a new body for 2018. That's the current plan.
So when, when you say overtime, just, I don't mean to get in the weeds here, but, so do you have a lot of non-exempt employees in your department that then are eligible for overtime?
Correct.
That would be filling these roles?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Just a couple. So one, because we work under this municipal stormwater permit, this new regulation is just making sure we do the testing more often, so we're sure that the water quality going out to the lake is good. That's why we do it.
That's correct.
It's a good benefit to the city, basically. So why not just use, why not just ask us for overtime this year? I mean, I guess we could talk about deliberations, but kind of would like to know if, I think we need the position, I like that, but why not just do it in an overtime, just ask for overtime?
Sorry? Yeah. Yeah. We're looking at, this is going to be, if we were looking at something that we thought was going to be a temporary or limited term, we would probably go that route. But this is, we know this is not going to go away. These requirements are mandated by the state, and they're the new requirement that we're looking at for under the permit. So it's just how we've determined it's probably the best, most flexible way to fill this for 2018, as we evaluate how we're going to combine and work our stormwater system going into the future.
Thanks. Any notes?
Just to follow, because I had the exact same question, just follow, but when, when you're filling that much work with overtime, the cost is usually pretty high. So if you're really spending that much in dollars of what an FTE would cost, it's going to cost you more in dollars, because overtime just costs more. So it feels weird to me to ask for an FTE, you're not going to fill. That just feels very strange. I understand what you're saying, but it also feels very strange to say we're, we wanted to hire somebody, but we're not going to hire them.
Sure. I understand that, yeah. And we're just, we're looking at a body of work and a way to accomplish that body of work. Yes.
Well, I just, I mean, there's a lot that goes into a decision like that, right? If you're saying six tenths of an FTE of overtime, you're going to pay nine tenths of an FTE in salary, that three tenths can easily get gobbled up by the search for the proper candidate, if you were going to bring somebody else in. And then the other part is, you're potentially going to then let them go when the work is done, if it, if it doesn't. I mean, I would much rather, generally speaking, hire low and, and add overtime as needed to fill things in versus hiring extra people and then having to potentially let them go. So I think, I just think it's a complicated issue. I don't think it's, I don't necessarily look at that as a, as a negative, right? It's, you have to go department by department in the nature of the work and the nature of what it takes to get people in to do that work.
So in the budget, in your organization, there'll be an additional .651 FTE in the organization. You're just not going to fill it with a new person?
Correct. For 2018.
But you're, yeah, you're securing the funds. And creating a position.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you.
Classification and compensation study.
We wanted to give you just a brief update of where we are with the study. Can you hear me? Brett's a lot taller. We wanted to let you know, if you recall, we broke this project into four phases. The first phase, we started, we talked to you back in May about that first phase, we started some work there. We have delayed that while we're concurrently studying our performance management system, which is, this is the work plan item that Emily and the consultant presented to the council in August. It concerns the gathering input from our employees about the future structure of the employee-employer relationship, or our employee development and assessment culture. We've just recently kicked off that project, and we'll continue it through the first quarter of 2018. So we've delayed phase, the phase one, and we'll pick that up again sometime after the first of the year. Phase two of the project is the classification analysis. We began that work in May, and we hope to have that work completed sometime after the first of the year. Phase three of the project is the salary analysis. And I think we've told you, we want to hire a consultant to come in and do that piece of the project. So on, in the human resources budget, on page 49, under the professional services, we've added $120,000 to that, to the budget for next year to cover the cost of that consultant. The scope of that work will be to finish the market analysis, to provide recommendations, and then to assist us in the implementation of those recommendations, including the employee communications. Do you have any questions? Yeah.
Thanks for the update on this. This looks great, and I was wondering, with, with the market analysis, is that something that comes with an additional cost? Has there already been pre-work done in that? Or when the consultant comes in, if they want to do additional work in that area, would that potentially be another ask? Or I'm just trying to.
Yeah, we broke it into, so the classification analysis and then the market analysis. We haven't done any work on the market analysis. We, that will be the $120,000.
That'll be, that'll be part of that?
Yeah. Right. Right. And we're hoping to have a consultant do that from beginning to end, so.
And the compensation analysis information has already been gathered, or?
No.
Okay.
No. We didn't want to do that internally. So, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Cost assumptions for 2018 benefits plan.
Okay. So, so for benefits, we do hire an actuary to come in every year to look at our benefit plan, our self-insured plan. And based on the actuary's recommendations and analysis, we set our premium rates. So based on that analysis, for the cost for 2018 over last year, will be approximately a $356,139 increase. To cover that increase, we'll be increasing premiums next year by 5%. The costs, again, are reflected in the salaries and benefits that you'll see throughout the budget document. Also, we purchase our dental vision and EAP services through AWC. AWC has told us that they won't be increasing rates for next year for those services. And we also participate in the AWC retro program for LNI. Those costs will increase 3.5% for some job classes, but very few. I think actually we'll have kind of a stable rate for next year.
So Larry, a question about the LNI. Is that because we have changed our experience modification rating in certain classes due to accident histories, or is this a more general increase?
I think it came from LNI. So I think it actually has to do with police and fire more than the other classes. Is that?
I guess what I'm trying to get at, is the LNI increase something that is sort of out of our control because it's industry-wide? Or is it specific to our city's accident history?
My understanding is it's industry-wide, so it, I guess it doesn't have anything to do with our experience or our participation in the retro pool.
All right. Is the, the 5% pretty typical in what, what you've heard outside of?
We're a little bit lower. AWC, I believe, is at 7.9, if I remember right.
Yeah, I had heard between 5 and 7, so, okay. That's great.
Yeah.
So this slide is assumptions for 2018 benefits plans. What are the assumptions? And you can answer this as part of the council questions that are asked, so later. The assumptions in terms of salary increases?
In terms of what was that?
Salaries only?
For the benefits?
So, yes, and I would suggest that we have, since all the contracts are in negotiation, a conversation as it relates to that in executive session, if that's okay.
For the non-union?
So.
We should clarify.
Yeah, if I, we can clarify that, if that's possible. Because unfortunately, sometimes that can influence where the groups end up trying to negotiate, where that comes. Yeah, if I, we can clarify that if that's possible. Because unfortunately, sometimes that can influence where the groups end up trying to negotiate, where that comes up. So we can certainly talk about that, but yeah.
Other questions? Next, administration proposed adjustments. Whoop, too fast. Okay, tonight, we are simply sharing this information. All of these items will be reflected in a future deliberations worksheet. So I'm gonna have Jen come up and just, do you wanna say anything about this, or does it say all you wanna say at this point?
No.
So just to give you a real, real quick understanding about revenue that we would like to have you add into the budget is a $40,000 transfer from the art fund to the general fund to cover the costs of the development coordinator who handles that. It is something that would have come up in a future cost allocation updates that we're going to be working on in 2018, but we know for sure that we wanna cover the cost of the work. It is budgeted in the operating fund, so that's some of the changes in our shifting our fund accounting, or where we classify. So this is just to ensure that we have some of the replacement dollars to cover that position costs. And so that's the dollar amount that we are proposing that you add in your budget deliberations.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, so this isn't new money. So this is a position that was funded in two ways. One was directly out of the arts fund, and the second was out of the old 301 capital fund. So it's really Arts and Development Coordinator. And so when we got rid of the 301 fund, that capital fund, we had to put her somewhere, and she's in the executive department. So she's still doing the art piece, but the thing is now, from an accounting standpoint, we aren't charging her salary to the arts fund anymore. It's being transferred in from the arts fund. So the expenditure ends up really being the same, but we didn't do was, from an accounting standpoint, we just forgot to incorporate that $40,000 transfer in the art fund to the general fund to cover the costs.
This isn't one, this isn't, is this one time, or this would be ongoing, approve this ongoing?
It would be an ongoing.
Okay. I guess just one side note, we've done it twice now. I'm not sure we should be, I don't think it probably feels good to talk about positions and specific people. Probably just positions.
Yeah, and I think, yes. And in this case, we only have one in the city. So, but yes, I understand. I wasn't trying to throw a name on the table.
I know, but...
Yeah.
I don't know that we try to make decisions on the budget based on who's in.
Yeah, and I guess what I was really just trying to say there is, we're not increasing the spending other than whatever the payroll adjustment would be for next year. It's just from an accounting standpoint, when we changed that, we forgot to include that transfer to balance that out. So I understand what you're saying. We'll try and avoid that in the future.
Any other?
Okay, so on the expenditure side, we talked about the first two. They were whoopses that should have been included. And the third one, we own the building that Atwork is in, at Seventh and Juniper. There's a building next door to their main building that they refer to as the annex and warehouse shelter structure. They have changed their operations, and so they no longer need that structure, the recycling structure. And the annex building is one that's not functional space for them and requires quite a bit of reinvestment in it if it's going to be utilized into the future. And so they have asked the city as property owner to remove those potential hazards and vacant structures. We have agreed that that would be an appropriate thing to do, not only because it mitigates risk, but also because there are ongoing deliberations, I think, with Atwork, and soon we'll be with city council about the future of that entire parcel. So I can say more about that when we get into deliberations, but that's what that one is, is to take down a couple structures.
So, so in regard to what might happen in the future, it could focus on that whole parcel and not just the demolition team?
The piece where these are. That's correct, but all that we're talking about right now is removing structures Atwork is not currently using and has no foreseeable use for in the future.
There's no plan right now as to what to do with that down the road?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Correct. Next one is Mountain Bike Skills Park. We were given some cash by the Highlands developer to put toward this project. That's been earmarked and set aside, and our parks department has heard from community over the last year that this is a desired thing. And so we didn't identify in the budget that we would like to utilize that set aside to start the planning work on that project. And the parks department would very much like to begin that. We've had conversations with partners, and they're very excited about the project. So we'd like to designate those funds in the budget.
Couple questions on that, Emily. So this was not in the CIP?
Correct. It's below the threshold.
Below the threshold, so. And then is there expiration with the mitigation funds? Or just a desire to proceed?
It's not technically, you wanna answer that?
These are funds that are identified in the mitigation aging schedule in the budget as non-restrictive, so we are not at risk of losing them.
Okay, thanks.
Right. Let me, let me clarify before this comes back later. The $33,000 is below the threshold, but that's, that's an increment that will be for planning. Construction estimate has not yet been done, and we'll have to see where that is.
So that kind of raises another question. So looking at the CIP, and even though something may fall under a threshold under the design, there is funds and effort being spent to advance certain planning on items on the CIP that we may not see?
Yes.
That makes me wanna ask what else, only because there was so much hardship and angst over even adding planning for a dog park, which has been asked for for over 10 years. So I guess a budget ask for me would be, I didn't know this one was coming. I'm not saying I like it or don't like it, but what else is sort of moving along, maybe just under the radar that we don't see?
I'm not aware of any other allocations for design money that aren't included in the CIP. Those things that are in the CIP, they've had a little bit more thought around them. We have some conceptual estimates for construction phases in some cases. In other cases, Jeff talked about, I think, two particular projects that are multi-year projects designed to start the planning effort for projects under that type of asset category. And so for those, we probably don't have construction estimates, but we know each year we can apply design money toward building out those projects.
So I'm a little surprised that we don't have an idea how much the skills park would cost, because this is actually something that we've been talking about, if memory serves, about eight years. Not as long as a dog park, but almost. And, you know, we've had property identified for all of those eight years.
Correct.
And so I'm surprised that we don't know. I thought we knew how much.
Well, I think we've got a ballpark number, but because it's been a long time and because we haven't actually expended any funds on, on real design, they're at the very conceptual level, and I think we wanna test those assumptions since there has been some passage of time to see if the features, for example, are still the ones that community wants.
Got it. My concern around the Mountain Bike Skills Park, which is something I've long supported, is, you know, it makes sense that, there's a price point at which it makes sense, and then there's a price point at which it's large enough that you would ask yourself, do we wanna invest, if we wanna invest in mountain bike activities, do we wanna make other sorts of investments, right? And I'm just gonna throw out a couple numbers. Might make sense at a total cost of $100,000. It might not make sense at a total cost of $300,000, right? Because the skate park, you know, we had some evolution of prices on the skate park. I'm a little concerned about this one, that it could grow to a point that it, that it wouldn't make the same sense that it made when we thought it was a small, easy to, easy to implement activity on an otherwise unused piece of property.
Sure, and that's perhaps part of the reason I'm reluctant to give you a number right now without having those scoping conversations and doing some more cost estimation. But we could utilize some of these earmarked funds to get closer to a number that we then could engage all of you in a conversation about whether to continue to pursue the project.
So, so I've got a concern as we, as we're trying to work on, and I'm not against the mountain bike park at all, but as we're pursuing this park strategic plan, and not knowing which of these things are gonna be our priority to work on, and if you start working with the community on a project that you don't know what the priority is, and then later on, the priority is very low, and you've started that conversation, and you've got people going, and now you're saying, oh, sorry, this, we decided this is our 10th priority, so it'll be done in 10 years from now. It's a weird way to start that expectation. So I'm just thinking that this should definitely not be considered until after that strategic plan says where we're going, what we're gonna work on, and we work on those in the order of that. That's the purpose of that plan, and not to be picking these things off here and there, although it's, you know, it's been on the radar for a long time, but obviously we haven't done much about it. So I don't wanna do anything on any parks, starting a new parks project until the strategic plan is signed off.
Your point is understood. I think what Jeff would say if he was here would be that we have a high degree of confidence that this is a community priority, and we have earmarked funds for this purpose. So this just gets us to that next place where we can start to develop a concept for the project. There'll still be opportunities to deliberate whether or not to pursue it as a top priority, but we have planned to do some work next year. We have planning money for strategic plans for parks that we know from the input we've gathered already on the park plan that are high community priorities. So we're, we're just trying to take the next steps because we can foresee what that report is going to tell us, because we're, we're at the very, very end of that project.
We certainly can talk more about it during deliberations.
Yeah.
Paul?
Yeah, because that...
Sure, we got it, yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate Bill's comment about the strategic plan. I also appreciate you adding this and allowing us to have this conversation. I didn't push real hard for it. It is in the CIP, it's part of the PK 008, it's embedded in there. And during the CIP process, I brought it up, I didn't really push very hard. And afterwards, I kinda wished that I had. And I knew this was money, and I know there's a little bit more history as well, in that there had been some hope at some point that maybe the county, we would do some land exchange with the county, and they would, the land that was identified where the skilled parks could go, which is underneath the power lines, may actually be given over to the county, if I'm remembering that correctly. And that didn't happen. And that's one of the reasons it's kind of, nothing's progressed, because there was hope that maybe the county would actually build the park, a skills park itself. So that didn't happen. We've got the land, we have the money that Port Blakely gave us, and so I'm glad, I'm glad we're gonna have a conversation about it this year. Thank you.
Are there, are there any questions? Are there any questions within deliberation?
Yeah, I don't have a question, but I did wanna say, is that $33,000, while it's in the mitigation fund, isn't really like mitigation in terms of fee. It was, yeah, a gift that Port Blakely made as part of the closeout. And so we kinda made a commitment when we accepted the $33,000 to at least explore. And I know at the time, we're trying to identify the land, and then we're also hopeful that we would find, you know, because a lot of, yeah, partners and volunteers, because a lot of doofy was built with volunteers. So at least the 33 would get us to a design element. And then the question would be, how would it get built? And are there any other potential grant funds that would be available to help cover some of the base costs? But we, as Emily said, we can't come up with a final number until we start to do that investment in design and that type of thing.
Thanks.
Okay, great. Water system plan update. We're just asking to reauthorize an allocation from 2017. We didn't quite get all of the work done this year, mostly due to staffing shortages, and so we're pushing parts of that project into 2018. The last bullet is about water quality. We're anticipating some additional costs in 2018 that we don't think we've fully captured in the budget. And so we'd seek another allocation to provide for some geotechnical services, some potential legal counsel, and I'm missing one, just went out of my head. Oh, a matching contribution to Department of Ecology in evaluating next steps for how to create a potential remediation plan in a regulatory environment that would help us to understand how to best deal with our water quality issue. Bob?
Yeah. Question?
Sorry.
Unless there's a question, but I think that was a good, good summary. I think soon, we need to do an update to council on where that is. We had a very good meeting with Ecology on that. Mary Lou Pauley was there, and the mayor, and Emily, and I, and Jeff Fray from the city. It's kinda weird, because we're part of EFOR too, but we were wearing our city hat there, and EFOR was there, and ultimately what it boiled down to was a desire, there's been a desire to remediate what we know as a source, not the only source. And there's issues with liability, and cleanup, and no soil standard. The good news was Ecology put on the table a willingness to fund the characterization of the site. And they've asked for a third from us, the city, and a third from EFOR. So we thought it was a great step forward. We've not gotten, I haven't talked to Jeff Clark yet about that proposal. I have a follow-up conversation with Ecology tomorrow. And so that, 30 of that 65 would be to cover that, that piece. And then there's gonna be some anticipated legal, I'm sure, legal expense and other management support from Bob with, I'm forgetting the name of the firm.
Geoscientech.
Geoscientech, yeah.
No questions, then I think we're moving on to the memo that was provided as a walk-on that we had a chance to read during the break. So Bob, maybe Jen's going up.
Thank you. What I wanted to do was just to do, this was a walk-on item, and certainly something that we understand that you may not have time, have had time to read a two-page memo, and then some other additional information in this information. But what we wanted to do is to talk about kind of next steps for the budget deliberation process and to help the council in the challenge that you have in understanding the budget as it was delivered, delivered to you in a new framework. And that our ultimate budgeting and financial goals are to shift us into some best practices in the budgetary management realm, where we want to ensure that our spending is based on results and that you can make data-driven decisions. So the framework that we proposed is difficult to decipher, and so wanted to give you some, just some quick background about why, why the budget document changed and our efforts to provide with, provide you with tools on how we can connect the budget document to the deliberations process.
So I think we did have time to read the memo?
Okay.
So I'm wondering if we wanna, we've got some samples.
Yes, for sure. Okay, thank you.
And so I'm wondering if we can go to the, unless, well, there are questions on the memo part of it, certainly. Paul, do you have a question?
No.
Okay.
I'll...
Okay. I'll just briefly walk through the sample documents because we wanted to gather some council feedback as we are starting to work on preparing some tools for you to connect the budget, parameter budget, to some decision-making tools. And so this first, it's on page three of the memo and packet, is an example of a budget highlights tool. And so this is what we have started to work on where we would put in those highlighted budget items, so things like the new revenue sources. And I'm just going to kind of briefly walk through, this is not a completed or finished document, but a sample as we move forward. We talked about, for example, the tech fee for online customer service applications. That dollar amount is about $92,000. It is identified in the Internal Services Fund. As we would walk through, we'd identified the parameter to connect it to the budget, if there was a secondary parameter, a program or project, an ongoing or one-time cost, and then the budget book number. And so we've identified this structure. As I move down to staffing, these are that green table in the staffing, and so this is a list of the new positions, the cost, and then again, the connection to the budget in these columns. And so you can see where I've identified the strategic plan, $90,000. The $30,000 for the council retreat would show up here. And so I just wanted to walk back to, as I circle back to the new revenue sources and the policy question, and my thoughts on the top line here, the new source for debt funding. That's a very broad topic, but what we've heard tonight is, does the council want to deliberate on just the Providence Point dollars? So you would see instead of the $2 million, you'd see two lines. $375 for Providence Point by itself, Agenda Bill, we tie that, and then we'd put in the same line for a new source of funding for a broader transportation package, and that number could be X dollars. So that's the intent of this document, to help you with those questions that we need direction from and for you then to use as a tool to add something to. So if there is an effort or a project or some spending that you would like to see added to the budget, we would add that here, so this would also serve as a deliberations tool for tracking. I also wanted to just walk down, we're trying to categorize, these are just kind of categories or buckets, so we've got some maintenance and operations items. This is the Parks Turf Replacement Reserve, so that would be the place where you would talk about that. Capital projects, then, this is the list of capital projects, the dollar amount proposed in 2018. So I'm going to move on to another sample, and the reason that I have, the police department has graciously volunteered to serve as a sample for this, and the chief didn't know we were using him as an example. So in the budget, page 50 and 51, what would we propose to be different to help connect would be in the top part here, under the parameter, maintain community safety. What we've added here is a better representation of the primary parameter that we were looking to accomplish, and the dollar amount. And you see that this then can help connect back to the budget highlights, but also to, you know, give that connection in the department budget on what's different. Then I'm just going to jump down onto page six of the examples. This would be essentially the replacement for page 51 of the budget, and this is an expansion into the divisions in a department that does have those. So what we did is we went back and we crafted the budget based on the police department divisions to show a comparison from one year to the next. So this is an example of what the budget would look like after we get done modifying it so that it would be more helpful for your comparative analysis. Then, from a story about what's changed in a department, I used myself in the finance department. This is page seven, and so this example, really at the bottom of this page, shows our plan to show what's changed for 2018. I want to bring you right here to these blue arrows in the percent budget change where we've got salaries and benefits are up, operating costs are up, and professional services are down. And so if you use that same up or down arrows, you would see salaries and benefits are going up because of the accountant position. Now, that's not the only reason in a department budget, but the major reason would be because we're asking for a new position. Operating costs are going up because of the new introduction of the IT cost allocation charges for those increased transparency and that parameter regarding continued lean principal implementation. And then operating costs are also going up because we're proposing, and this is, this might be considered a small dollar amount, but it is a reason why operating costs are going up in the finance department for more training dollars for professional development and regulatory compliance. And then professional services are going down because we're looking to reduce the temporary staffing with the new position, as well as reduce the state auditor charges for the field work and compliance. So that's the example in the story of what's changed in the budget. The last example pertains to the capital projects and the connection from the CIP to the operating budget. And so I want to walk through this document very quickly, a little bit closely. This would connect some dots, we are hoping. The CIP summary in the budget on 87 is a snapshot of the asset categories and the total spending in the capital budget. And so at the top, in the blue box, we've made some notes about that reconciliation from the transportation schedule to the actual accounting side of things in the budget. And so this one is a little bit unique, and I wanted to use this as an example. That total spending for transportation capital projects was $19,524,667. It's unusual because we have two capital projects. One capital project fund for the ITS camera is going away, but I wanted to make sure that the numbers that you discussed in the capital budget process were reflected here and easier to connect. So the street capital projects that are listed below to tie some of those numbers, but to get you back to other documents that you have seen. The actual fund is page 90 in the budget, and what's different here is that it's still the total budget for revenues and expenditures, but we've separated out so that you can see very clearly that there are some reauthorizations for cash flow purposes on some of these multi-year projects. So you can see that that is an adjustment that's made in the budget, but in the middle part of the line item project fund is the capital projects that are listed in the CIP. And so then this would replace that page, page 90 of the budget for capital projects and that crosswalk to the CIP. So these are examples. I'd love to hear any feedback of the council so that we're moving in the right direction to get you tools for decision-making that's better.
Well, my first thought is, and comment is, that you've done a lot of work between Monday and now, and I really appreciate that. Thank you very much. I like all of these, and the only comment I have, this helps me a lot, the only comment I have is on the, I'd have to go back to 2016, so it's more of a question than a comment, and that is when you have the expanded police page, but it's not just the police fire page. When you have the expanded, my recollection is, and I certainly could be wrong, is that we had shown trends over time back in the 2016 budget. So here we have 2017 amended, 2017 projected, 2018 proposed. My recollection is that we were showing trends.
That's a good point. One of the additional pieces outside of the actual kind of modification to the budget document is it will be a supplemental section item where we are going to bring back the 2015, 16, 17 actuals for that comparative analysis. So we're, yes, we are working on that as well.
And so I was actually looking at it today, and 2016 went all the way back to 2011. So that was two years ago, but if we're now bumping up to our last year review is 15, it looks like we're cutting off a couple of years of trending.
One of the reasons for that is budget best practices, is that we're only required to have two years, and so our idea for the supplemental section to give you that very data-rich information was to bring back three years of data. So, I mean, that was our idea for that, but if you want additional information, we can continue to work on producing that from, we have our former system, and then we would have our new system, so would take some extra effort, but we can certainly start to work on creating that real historical look back.
Okay, thanks for the answer.
Mariah?
So I, my comment is, might be sort of a long one, so bear with me. First of all, I just want to say, Jen, thank you for the additional work, and I think that the examples are great, and I totally understand having parameters and priorities and like from a high level, what's changing. And all of that, like in a snapshot way, makes a lot of sense. So I've done a lot of work on executive teams with budgets, and a lot of times, the executive teams have been together for a long time, and everybody who's involved in the budget conversation, we all sort of know the budget. But this is a different situation, and what's really missing for me is that when I look back at 2017, which I have in my lap here, and I wanted to find the police department, not to pick on the police department, but that was one of the examples. Oh, maybe I can just do the finance department. Sorry, just one second. And now I can't find the police department. Okay, I'm just going to do the finance department. But in the finance department, there was a summary of departmental activities and responsibilities. There was the new work plan focus. There was a snapshot of staffing levels. There's prior year accomplishments. There's the financial budget in a bar chart, that kind of thing. And so what was nice to be able to look at as a new council member, when I went through this in 2017, is that there was really a communication piece to it. And so, you know, part of it is like, what is the purpose of the budget? And is part of the purpose of the budget too, is to create some transparency and to let everyone in the city who wants to take a look at the budget understand what was accomplished and what are the plans going forward and that kind of thing. And so the snapshot is really useful as we're going through budgeting, but some of that additional material is, I was sad to see that lost. And I would think that for, you know, once or twice a year, as department heads are going through, that they would be able to provide that, you know, that overview, and I think it gives more information back to the public, but it's also really helpful to get an overview and kind of put framework and put things in perspective as you're looking at the budget numbers. And then on the new budgets, while I was looking at the police department and not the finance department when I was looking at this, but for example, some of the line items, it looks like operating, it's now operating, and it used to be, I don't have it in front of me, goods and services. There were like two different line items in 2017, but now those have been broken down and collapsed into just operating. But it just gave, you know, one more, it wasn't getting into line item, but it gave one more level of detail, and that was helpful to me. So not that I have to slide totally back to 2017, but it was more informative for me. So while I really like what I see, some of that additional information, I think should still be captured and out there.
Yep, it's getting late. Let's go. Mary Lou?
So Mariah said fascinating, because I think from the way that our council is structured, some people may only be sitting in a two-year seat, and this is a pretty big thing to try and understand in two years. So I respect exactly what she's saying, but my comments were coming from a different place. I just wanted to say, I actually think she's got that right for new council members coming on, and you've done a good job this year pointing out those things that may get helpful for new council members coming on. I liked this first example, Jen, very, very much. It reminds me exactly of how the same information was presented at Eastside Fire and Rescue, and so I like this snapshot version of it. I think it looks like it feeds right into what our deliberations would be, and so I like that quite a bit. On the next couple of pages, like on the police breakdown, I would have to say for me personally, looking at this, this wasn't quite as helpful. It may go to the point that there wasn't quite enough here yet, I'm not sure, but when you got to the example you did on the finance department with these changes and these arrows, oh, fantastic. This was awesome. This really moved the needle quite a bit for me. And I really like the last page. It reminds me of an exercise I went through last year on my own, trying to match up plans versus actuals in transportation, and you have it here. This is great. This really, I can draw a picture in my head of what we thought we were going to do, what we actually accomplished, and how we sort of adjusted in this year's budget proposal to be able to see what's happening next year. So I really like that last page quite good.
Paul?
Thank you. I also would echo the, I found especially, looking back at the 2016 document, having the FTE count, for example, in each of the departmental areas. Just like, for example, when Brett was here earlier, it's one thing to look at his page, it was another thing to go find, okay, where did this FTE thing show up? And it's actually, it was kind of difficult to find. So having it just organized that way at the department level, whether, even though his is not a general fund, but still, I agree that additional information was helpful. I also thought the narrative, thank you for the narrative, especially the, this whole idea is the, I guess it's technically the third paragraph, that this budget is an attempt to shift to a results or priority-based budgeting where the focus is on the community wants. If you just go on and read that. So thank you for that. I think that would have helped me a lot if it would have been originally presented, kind of, that there was that framework. So this backfill is much appreciated. And the other, the second to the last paragraph as well, where I think, Jen, you talked about it already, it says, "With the technical and fund accounting changes described above, the ability to easily compare one budget year to the next." So I understand that there are, when you go through a new system, basically the numbers are now categorized a little bit different than they were, so it's difficult, things to compare year over year. But then you just said a moment ago that maybe you can do it anyway, so that confused me.
Well, one of the things I wanted to clarify is that in the technical changes, one of the pieces of that is the actual bars coding. So in prior year's budget, we did not have the right classification there. So we want to transition that so that we are exact in the bars object code. So we're excited about the new budget software, because the way that we're going to set it up is that it will be based on that, and so the lift to create a budget document that, you know, gives you the right terminology, what we'll do is then have that glossary, or we can expand on the glossary to help with those transitions when we make those, but that's a long answer to the question. But that's, long answer to the question is, is that we want to ensure that we have the proper terminology on those classifications, and that's the technical side of the budget that we've prepared, or that we intend to prepare.
Okay, so that'll be a heavy lift?
Yes, it will be.
You're going to go back three years? Okay. You're sure you're going to give us three years of back? You're going to try? Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, so, yes, thank you for this. A lot of work in a couple of days, and I do appreciate that. I do really like the highlights page, that's a really good thing. And like the last page, when you get, you know, you can get some good overviews, those are great. I do basically agree here that the rest of the budget by department, it's really nice to see all that, where we are, and all the things you're going to accomplish. Like I think, and Mary Lou mentioned about, what does the public see about what they're doing? So if they look at the police department budget, they could just see on top, here's what you're focusing on this year, or the parks department, or whatever, the things that they'd be interested in. This is what we did last year, this is what we're going to do this year, this is how it's working. You know, those things that we're talking about, you know, work plan focus and those overviews, workload indicators, those kinds of things. And an explanation of why things are different, right? So if I see numbers that are different, then if I have no explanation, I just can't accept them, right? So it's like, okay, this is going up because, like, on the one, IT, okay, now that's a big one. So if on the charges there that IT is, you know, an extra $200,000 in your budget or whatever, then that explains that rise, right? So didn't have to worry about that anymore, I understand that. So those things that are causing changes, I need to understand. So that's the most critical piece. So if it's really the same as last year, and we're going to do the same as last year, and the budget is the same as last year, then that's okay. But if everything's the same, but the budget is not the same as last year, then that's where I'm going to have a lot of questions, right? So that's a part within the departments. And I'll backtrack a little bit, because I heard you say this is like, to really do what you're saying here, a couple of weeks of really hard work. And I don't want you to have to do all that, but I'm not sure how to get around this. But you also said previously that you had all this inline item budgets, whenever we wanted it, you would share that with us. You have that. If that takes no work, maybe that's something we need to just see. Versus two weeks of a lot of work to figure out something that we may still have questions with, and then just a moment, all of a sudden, we're in the middle of November, and in my mind, we're really going to start looking at the budget in the middle of November when you get the rest of it to us. So it's going to be really hard time-wise to get that done. So I don't have a problem looking at line item budgets, it's not what I particularly want to do, but I'd rather look at that now than wait two weeks and have you work really hard for two weeks to produce something that's going to again, when I'm going to start asking questions on that part of it. I'm not sure what to do in the now and those next two weeks for the questions I'm going to have that are, you know, kind of data-driven. And then get to the real questions I have, once I understand all the information, then I get to the real questions, because I understand all the information, and I have a hard time getting to them. I looked at, as I mentioned, the three pages of questions, and I went back and really looked at them, and, you know, easily two-thirds, if not more of those are information, data questions. They're not really deep, good conceptual questions that I really want to ask, because I haven't gotten there yet. So that's where I'm having the problem. So if we wait two weeks, middle of November, seems like we're pushing ourselves into a corner.
So I mean, I like all these improvements, and I think if one were to go and implement all these improvements throughout the budget, you would have definitely the most well-documented city budget, you know, that I would have seen. You know, I think that what that allows somebody to do is it allows them to bore into any particular area and understand it a lot better. We're obviously not going to bore into every line, bore in to every line item that's in here. We, you know, we just, that's not, that's not what we're going to do. So I still personally, and all seven of us are different, really want to look at exception handling and saying, okay, at a high level, if I zoom out, you know, at a high level, how are we doing overall? How are we doing on public safety? How are we doing on EFER? How are we doing on parks? You know, and I understand it can be hard this year, apples to apples, because you've been doing different, you know, various finance things. But I still, at the end of the day, what I want to know is that we, as a city, are operating at a comparable efficiency for the services and benefits that we provide to the public as we have historically. And if not, why, right? What's changed? Maybe public safety has gotten more expensive, because we've decided that as we've grown, we have a different class of challenges that require different investments, those sorts of levels. So at the risk of sounding argumentative, I'm sort of at the opposite direction from some of this level of detail. I want to see at the high level where we're having challenges continuing to deliver the efficiencies that we've historically delivered at. Because I, to just beat a dead horse, you know, last year, I just loved the ability to say, these were all within historical trends in terms of, again, the per capita real dollars, right, over time. And so I don't know exactly what that looks like in 2017, but to me, if you do it right, you can actually have that high-level conversation fairly quickly across the board, just see where the hot spots are, and talk about the hot spots. So, and I don't presuppose to tell you how to do that, but that's what I hope to, at the end of this, at the end of this conversation, in, late in November, I want to be able to, if somebody sees me on the street and they say, "How are we doing?", I want to be able to say, "You know what? We continue to be able to deliver services efficiently and, you know, the way we have historically." And that's what I try to get out of this budget process. Thanks.
One of the pieces in the supplemental section is the financial indicators. And so I would love to hear some direction or some feedback on that, if that would be a useful tool for, and the indicators are for the general fund, if that might be a tool that we can, that we can expand on and publish in an outward-facing mode to help with that, those conversations. Some of the pieces in the indicators are historical, looking backwards where we've been, revenues per capita, and then looking forward with, are we going to be okay? And so I just wanted to just clarify and find out if that might be a useful tool, and in our work to continue to expand on the financial indicators and use of the financial model would help us move in the direction for giving that more high-level look at, how are we doing in our financial performance?
I would certainly like a guided tour through this, the financial indicators. I arrive at the limits of what I know as a mechanical engineer on these things, but I mean, this looks like very valuable information.
Okay, thank you.
I'm looking at that, I'm looking at page 146, 147, that general area of the budget.
Thank you.
Yeah, that is a lot of the high-level performance stuff.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay, well, it sounds like there's still dialogue. I was just going to say, it would be fantastic to get just a little bit more clarity. Had a lot of different inputs. I heard majority, I think, opinion of, hey, finance team, go ahead and start to build this out for the rest of the departments, that these are helpful tools. I heard desire for additional narrative-type pieces, and I'm not sure we can turn that around in two weeks. And I think we can have some more conversation about what that looks like in the future. And your primary question, I think, was a great one about what does a budget book need to be? And knowing that in the future, we're going to have other community reports to tell the story about work accomplishments and efforts, and how we've hit community outcomes. But I would just love to ensure that the team is going to go back and spend their time appropriately. So I'm kind of seeing nodding heads that these pieces would be good to prepare in the next two weeks. And then I wanted to offer, this has been true for a few months now, that we'd love to sit down with any of you to talk through specific questions. So if you have questions about particular categories of expenditures that are going up or down, I'd love to talk through all of those with you.
Mariah?
So one super important thing that I forgot to say is that my comments around the overview of the departments were really, I wasn't expecting that now. I was focused on, in the future, I think that's like a super easy ask, like every department head is like, hey, this is what we did. And it's a great communication tool. I don't even, I don't see why we wouldn't do that, actually. But I was just going to say, Jen, I really do like, especially the fact page and some of the information that will allow us to really key in as we're deliberating. My point was just, there's all this great communication, there's all this great work that's been done. This is yet another opportunity to be able to say that. But it also does give a lot of context. I mean, we could have all sorts of different people on council, but next time we go through budget, right? And it gives a lot of context. So in the future, I would like that to be considered, but I'm not expecting that that would happen in the next couple of weeks. I want to concentrate where we need to concentrate.
And I guess I want to tell the why behind my comments here. The general gist is, at some point in time, we're going to, we may, ask the public to tax themselves to fund some additional transportation projects. And I find that a hard thing to do if I'm not really sure that we're running a really tight, lean budget and everything else, so that we don't have some funds that can go towards those items. Because that's, you know, like I say, I don't want to tax where you already have collected some tax another place that you can use that. So that's going to be a really heavy lift for me to get to that point of asking for additional taxes with whether, you know, a levy lid or a transportation benefit district. And so if I don't feel this is just really lean, and I don't feel that at this point, then it's going to be hard for me to get to the next one, because that's where you start doing. It's like your own stuff. If you need additional money, you lean out some areas to get that in the other area you do, where you need it, and shifting that around. And so that's where I'm really needing that information, because I'm looking at that next future piece.
Mary Lou?
So I just tell you what I thought I heard tonight. And so for council members, budget process seems to be a journey, which we start with your, the mayor's proposal. And I think there's some pieces this year that generally we all agree, Jen's new proposals today might get us there, but then there are other council members who, on their journey, are going to need to sit down with you one-on-one and look at data. But the last piece of our journey is exactly what Tola said. We need to go out in the public and say, you know, this is what happened. This is what happened last year, this is what we changed, and this is where we're going, and it's all good. And so I think maybe the frustration that happened at our first session was, we all kind of got stuck right at the beginning of the journey, and we're going, I don't know if we can get over the finish line. But I think what we heard tonight was great, and I think some people may need that one-on-one and that data piece differently, but for the majority of us, I think we heard what Jen brought was really good. Now, at the end of the day, we need to be able to tell that story that Tola talked about, because that's what makes us all feel good at the end. So I think we made great progress tonight. Thank you both, like really great progress.
Read. Did you get what you wanted in terms of feedback?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Isn't anything else?
Thank you, Jen, for all the hard work.
Yes.
Thank the finance team.
And Emily and Bob and everybody. Thank you.
Okay, we're adjourned.
Thank you.